I've asked them to put on masks and the officer can request for them to leave. That is, that is a, a rule for the city of Williamsburg in this building. Sorry, couldn't hear you. I don't know that I want to. First Amendment right to free speech. I'm not sure that requires a mask. Okay, um, we're gonna go. I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I get a motion for certification to closed session?
Mrs. James City County. Our closed session discussed only public business and is roughly exempted. Open meeting or conference, state of your opinion. Public matters identified in the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Oenby. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. At this point, we'll call the public hearing on the American Rescue Plan to order. Mr. Dowell?
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker, Mr. Ty Lagaman.
Can you go through the rules first of the, for the speakers?
Sure, I think I'll need to go to...
If I put you on the spot for that.
I'll go to, uh, citizens' comments for that. They're gonna be the same, correct? Okay. So it's at this point in the meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered during the public comment and this public hearing. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. The board does not respond to your comments. Your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Three minutes during the public hearing to make their presentation. The board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. And our first speaker is Ty Lagaman. Sorry about that. Appreciate it.
My name is Ty Lagaman. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board again. I think it's a, with this money that we're looking at how to allocate, I'd like to reiterate the opportunity to livestream or zoom the classes. As for instructional content, it allows students who either are unable or unwilling, whether for COVID or other reasons, not to be in school, whether for one day or several days, to be able to keep up. Otherwise, we run the risk of kids falling apart or falling behind. Right now, our approach is that we're either going to return to learn five days a week in the building, or you're going to do Virtual Academy, which is 100% virtual. We need to be able to adapt our instructional offerings to better align with different families and their needs and the students. And so I, I would propose that when you're looking at allocating money, go beyond just buying Virtual Academy seats and try to allow students, when they stay home, to be able to see what's going on in real time and stay up with their peers. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Lagaman. Okay, thank you much. For that, I will close the public hearing. Ms. Aller, can you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Oenby. Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here. Thank you. 4.02 approval of the agenda, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. 5.01 announcement superintendent's report, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. WJCC Schools is on the road to a safe school year. More than 150 of the division's school buses have safety and technology upgrades, including stop-arm cameras to deter drivers from illegally passing stop-school buses. Additionally, the buses have 360-degree interior, windshield, rearview, and side-load cameras. According to reports from WJCC Schools bus drivers, there were over 2,000 unofficial violations in the community from September 2019 to March 2020. With the new cameras and support from local law enforcement agencies, the division hopes to decrease the number of students this, or incidents this school year. According to Virginia's state law, drivers must stop for stationary school buses with flashing red lights and stop-arm deployed. The stop-arm cameras will now capture photos of cars illegally passing stop-school buses. The police department can then use these photos to issue tickets to drivers of the vehicles. The penalty for first-time violation is $250. In other back-to-school news, tomorrow we welcome 175 new teachers joining the WJCC Schools team for the first time. New teacher orientation includes professional development on several topics, including instructional technology, content and grade-level-specific professional learning, communication, and wellness. In addition, our teachers will hear from a student panel about what they think makes teachers great. Of the 775 teachers who are joining WJCC Schools, 50 are entirely new to the profession. The remaining 125 are coming to us from other school divisions in Virginia and across the country. And finally, I'd like to remind families that open house events are coming up next week. Families with the last name beginning A through L should plan to visit the school between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. Families whose last name starts with M through Z should stop by the school between 5:30 and 6:30. Blended families may attend either session. As a reminder, all visitors must wear a mask while indoors at schools or school division offices. We are excited to welcome students and families to schools. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any other announcements from board members? It takes us to 6.01 citizens' comments.
Sorry.
Yes?
Has the clock been adjusted? That's what I wondered. I don't know who to ask that question.
Yes, it has been.
Ask me.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're good. Mr. Dowell?
All right, so, again, the instructions for citizen comments, and again, the Striker Center has asked that all speakers do wear masks. Everybody that's present, wear a mask. So we're asking that if you are coming to the podium to speak, that you wear a mask. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It's the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated through, excuse me, two minutes to make their presentation. And the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. And Mr. Chair, the first speaker is Karen Burgsagel. Hope I said that right?
Thank you. My name's Karen Burgsagel. I live in Roberts District. And I'm here to urge you, if you have not already, to adopt the Department of Education's recommended policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia public schools. Sex is not binary. Transgender people are real. The American Academy of Pediatrics has stated that variations in gender identity and expression are normal aspects of human diversity. I've read the model policies carefully, and I think they're very appropriate in order to provide a safe educational environment for our gender non-conforming youth. I'm here on my own. I don't represent anyone. I'm just someone in the community who cares about the health and well-being of all children, including those who have been marginalized because of their gender identity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Mr. Peter King.
Good evening. My name is Peter King. I'm a resident in James City County. I'd like to thank the school board for the service that you provide with the goal of providing excellence in education. My reason for being here is to identify concerns that have to do with the Department of Education's policies regarding transgender students. Concerns that seem to show very little, if any, concern for non-transgender students. I think all of us here agree that all students should be protected from physical harm, as well as any form of harassment, bullying, or things that could bring about emotional distress for any of the students regardless of their orientation. For the sake of time, I will just briefly list three items that seem to lack concern for these policies, how they might affect non-transgender students if they were to be adopted into our school district. First item. Under the DOE guidelines, it states access to facilities such as restrooms, locker rooms that correspond to a student's gender identity shall be available to all students, and that it can be emotionally harmful for a transgender student to be questioned regarding the use of restrooms and facilities. School staff should not confront students about their gender identity upon entry into the restroom. Will the board consider the emotional and physical ramifications of this policy on non-transgender students in regards to the expectations of privacy and safety that they've been accustomed to? The second concerns the guidelines that says deciding one's sexual orientation is a natural human characteristic. It says in the guidelines that the most children will decide their sexual orientation by the age of five or six years old.
King, that's, that's two minutes. I apologize for that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
That's two minutes, that's the most we have, so if you could...
I, I took, all right, just, just a moment, please.
Yeah, if you could just give your comments to the school board clerk, she'll make sure that we all get the, get the comments. I appreciate your time and I appreciate you coming out there.
I appreciate your time, and I'm a citizen, and you said three minutes. I took a lot of time. I took a lot of time.
King, if I can clarify, the three minutes was for the public hearing. We're now in public comment, it's a different portion of the meeting, and I said two minutes. Just to clarify, I said two minutes.
It said three minutes on the form that I filled out, sir.
Up to. Up to.
Yeah.
I spent a lot of time to make it three minutes.
Yeah, so, so, but as I said before we started and as...
Are you gonna grant me the time to finish? I have about a half a page here, that's it.
No, sir, I'm not.
Okay, I'd like everybody to know that this board is refusing to grant time for the welfare of the children that they stand to represent. And they are not willing to hear the concerns that many people have for the children in the James City County School District.
And we are very willing to.
Speaker, please. Our next speaker is Ashley Gitkos.
Hi. My name is Ashley Gitkos. I am a parent of two elementary school kids in W James City County Schools. I expect there will be a lot of talk about masking tonight, so I wanted to come tonight and say thank you for listening to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Virginia Department of Health, the CDC, and the World Health Organization. Until their grade level has had the opportunity to become fully vaccinated, please continue to require masks in school. To those who will come after me, who will speak later on tonight, who will argue that breathing in carbon dioxide from their masks will negatively impact their brains, I ask us all to consider healthcare workers who have been wearing masks day in and day out, hours and hours a day, for decades. These are the people who we go to for medical care. I think we can agree that their brains are not, are not negatively impacted by mask-wearing. To those who fear loss of freedom, I am a military spouse. I have proudly sent my husband off to multiple deployments. I am happy with the freedom that we enjoy in this country. I would remind everyone that the government tells us to wear clothes, to wear seatbelts when we are in our cars, tells us where we can smoke and where we can't. Freedom doesn't mean the ability to do whatever you want, whenever, and wherever. You, as a school board, are not tasked with doing what makes the most parents happy, but with what keeps our children safe. Masks keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gitkos. Ms. Laura Cottle. Ms. Cottle, do you have a mask?
No, sorry, I don't, but I do have Governor Northam's written edict that says that I have the right to claim medical exemption on that, and I'm doing that tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. The biggest risk, oh, first, my name's Laura Cottle, I have five kids in the WJCC school system. The biggest risk for death in preschool-aged children is drowning. For children ages five to 14, they are in descending order here: cancer, vehicle accidents, suicide, homicide, cardiovascular disease, drowning, the flu, the list goes on and on, and at the very bottom is COVID. The first thing we need to establish is that requiring masks is not about saving children's lives. If you are concerned about saving lives, you'd be pushing ideas like preschool swimming lessons, increased age requirements to drive, you'd be serving healthy food in the cafeterias, you'd allow more than 15 minutes recess, recess break for a seven-hour school day. No, it's clear health and saving lives is not on your agenda. The real thing we're after here is seizing parental control. Why else would you mandate masks, knowing full well there is no science behind it? Masks don't prevent the spread of this virus or any other virus. There is not one credible study that says that masks work. Here is what the studies do show. Since masking and lockdown, suicide is rising dramatically in children of all ages. Children are fearful, anxious, falling behind in their studies and basic communication skills. They are not forming emotional connections. Also, are you so disconnected that, from those that you claim to serve, that you can't remember what it was like to see a friendly face on the first day of school, or a teacher's reassuring smile when you were just so frustrated? Stop saying that we need children to protect adults. Every adult working in the schools has had the vaccine or the opportunity to be vaccinated. There is no reason for mask mandates. The truth is, masks cannot protect you from getting or spreading the aerosol virus. It's pure theater at children's expense. Thomas Sowell once said, "It's so easy to be wrong and to persist in being wrong when the costs of being wrong are paid by others." The cost of you being wrong is the price that children in our district shouldn't have to pay. Children are the most marginalized and vulnerable. We can all read the CDC guidelines. As parents, it's up to us to decide how best to implement this in our families. Please, parents who, who love their children should make their health decisions. Get out of our way, these aren't your kids. You've got the power to undo this harmful mandate, and you would have the admiration and support of your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle. Travis Cottle.
They're not okay.
Yeah, this is not, please, can we hold the, not have the applause? We're not doing that on, either way, so please, can we do that? Is there any way that we could please do that?
It's not a right to have public comment.
It's, right, I mean, it's, it's not a right to have public comment, we don't have to have...
The privilege.
Please.
Hi, my name is Travis. I'm a senior at Jamestown High School. I'm gonna start off by stating some stats from the CDC. The COVID survival rate is 99.96% among children. Suicide rate is up 50% since the mask mandate was put in place. Anxiety and depression is up 400% since it was put in place. A psychiatrist in Florida reported, kids these days get so anxious that they're too afraid to take off their mask, and some of them have to carry around a keyboard, and they can't look at them directly in the eyes. The uptakes in suicide, anxiety, and depression are directly linked to wearing masks. We know that a mask mandate made by our governor is not only unconstitutional and tyrannical, but when it comes to young kids, it's child abuse. We know you're doing a lousy job trying to save our kids from COVID, but at least you're trying. What measures are you taking to stop suicide, anxiety, and depression? How many kids have died in this school system from COVID in the past year and a half, and how many have died from suicide? How many have depression and anxiety? We were endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, which are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It's because of these God-given rights, and because of the U.S. Constitution, that I will not be wearing a mask to school, whether or not you lift your mandate or not. But I hope you will lift your, you will lift your mask mandate for other students who feel the same way, but are too good-natured to put an end to the tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle. Coran?
I have to take a recess and stop this.
I don't, it's not gonna stop it. Kendall Coran? It's not gonna stop it.
We can stop public comment.
We can, but we're just gonna get through this. Yes. We're just gonna get through it.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name's Kendall Garen. I'm a resident of James City County and a retired military officer, where I swore to uphold the Constitution, which I brought copies for anyone who'd like to review them. I have two issues that I will address tonight. I have significant concerns about the mask requirement and any potential future COVID-19 related mandates at WJCC schools. I don't know what's happened to America as a society since COVID-19, but it has somehow become the only threat to our children in the minds of many people. This narrow, myopic, neurotic view is dangerous for our kids, and I will not stand idly by and allow the governor and other bureaucrats to determine what is best for my son. Even with the Delta variant, the risk of serious, long-term effects, or death is very low, yet we are muzzling our kids with absolutely no regard to the actual long-term effects of these draconian measures. At the end of the last school year, my son had major acne breakouts, headaches, difficulty focusing, and was overall miserable wearing a mask all day, five days a week. It was madness. Parents know what is best for their children, not government. No government official at every, any level. Mask? No mask. Parents should choose. My second issue is the scourge of critical race theory that is permeating our society and schools. It must be stopped. It's bad enough telling my white kid that no matter his character, he's somehow racist, but what's even worse is telling minority kids, "It doesn't matter what you do, it doesn't matter how hard you work, you'll never succeed." Sending those messages to all kids based only on their race is downright abusive. Martin Luther King Jr. isn't turning over in his grave from this dangerous nonsense, he is spinning at record pace. Judge each man, woman, and child by the content of their character, not by the color of their skin. Shame on anyone who muzzles our kids and teaches them to hate one another based on their appearance. And I'll close by stating that until these unconstitutional mandates end, my son will not attend any James City County Schools. I will...
Thank you, Mrs. Garen. Toby Wiseman.
Evening, members of the board. My name is Toby Wiseman. We all want our kids to return to school and be at their highest functioning level possible, especially after a year and a half of academic setbacks forced by COVID mitigation measures. So let's give them a holistically healthy educational environment in which they can gain ground and thrive. Putting them in masks is detrimental to their physiological, cognitive, and emotional health. Neither is mass vaccination the answer. Per the CDC's, you've already heard tonight, there is a 99.997% survivability rate for zero to 19-year-olds. Re-inhaling carbon dioxide from mask-wearing for kids and adults, but we're talking about kids, damages the internal organs. Reduced oxygen intake inhibits brain and cognitive development. Research indicates that it is 15% more difficult... Research indicates that it is 15% more difficult to recognize masked individuals, and holistic processing of faces is disrupted. Masking children also reduces their ability to develop a strong immune system. Disgustingly, 68 bacterial colonies, four mold colonies, are found on masks being worn after eight hours by children. Even Dr. Fauci's research teams discovered the severe surge of bacterial pneumonia deaths during the 1918 Spanish Flu, which correlated to mask-wearing. He also understood the rarity of asymptomatic transmission when he unequivocally stated, quote-unquote, "In all the history of respiratory-borne viruses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks; it is always asymptomatic persons." Data from one and a half million K-12 students and staff, even before vaccination, indicated that mask mandates were not associated with student or teacher infection rates. Masks dehumanize children and treat them as diseased vectors, which is factually unsound, emotionally cruel, putting on them an undeserved burden of guilt and shame. For a virus that is non-lethal to children, an experimental gene therapy is unnecessary, especially countered against the risks of myocarditis. Pfizer's own clinical trials of the vaccine show disturbing effects on young people, including symptoms consistent with myocarditis. There are teenagers experiencing blood clots and seizures.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. I appreciate it. Thank you. The time is up.
I have just a few more sentences.
The time—
The National Library of Medicine—
The time is up.
The National Library of Medicine said the specific and significant risk of ADE should have been and should be prominently—
Ms. Wiseman, if you could give your comments to the school board clerk, I would really appreciate it.
Finally, the National Childhood Vaccine Injury Act of 1986 protects pharmaceutical companies from lawsuits for damages.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman.
It's ethically sound to promote a drug for which there is no legal resource—
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman.
—for the vaccine injured.
Thank you.
Masking and vaccination should be optional.
Thank you. We're just going to power through it. Let's go.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Petrino, and I live in James City County. I know you're really focused on equity, and my thinking on equity would be is if you're serious about equity, you need to really think very carefully about uniforms. Nothing says equal like everybody wearing the same thing, so that might be something to consider, K-12. The second thing I would say is Zooming the class instruction, because if somebody falls behind, they can then still stay plugged in, whether they're ill or have family emergencies or whatever. So I really consider the Zoom idea as an outstanding use of funds. The third idea would be school choice. This makes it the most equitable for all students. Have the money follow the student, so if the parents are unhappy with the choices of the school board and the superintendent, the money would follow the student to homeschool or private. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Petrino.
Susan Patton.
I can't understand half of the things that you're saying. Sorry about that. I hope you can understand me. My name is Susan Patton. I am a citizen here in the city of Williamsburg. It was wonderful to see Dr. Ben Carson publicly speaking and working against the form of teaching that has infiltrated our school systems. Our children are the most precious gift in this world. We, as their teachers, need to find the conviction to educate ourselves and understand the divisive outcome of this teaching and stand against division and the teaching of our children to judge someone by their physical attributes, as our past and current civil rights leaders of all races have fought and died for, and begin teaching, "Love your neighbor as you love yourself." Teach love and togetherness, not hate and division. It would be interesting and educational to have a town hall-type meeting where each of you would have the privilege and responsibility of setting our school's curriculum, could answer questions, and declare your feelings and thoughts of the idea of critical race theory, culturally responsive curriculum, or whatever name you give, the teaching of children, adolescents, and adults to judge by color before learning who a person is, no matter where they come from or what they look like. I pray and hope you find the courage and conviction to step up and stand against this movement. These, among others, were my mother's favorite sayings, which are the words she taught us by. Listen to these words and think on them. Keep your heart free from hate, your mind from worry, expect little, give much, sing often, live simply, pray always, fill your life with love, scatter sunshine, forget self, think of others, do as you would be done by. This world could be so much nicer if we raised and taught our children with the lessons my mother used and do learn from a simple quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, and I quote, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate; only love can do that." These children come to you with innocence. Don't teach them to judge, discriminate, and label others, and by that practice, to hate. Have a thoughtful evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Mr. Manzo, do you have a mask?
No, I got a religious exemption. Don't get to it. Good evening. First, I would like to give glory to God for allowing me to speak in front of this board. My name is Rafael Manzo. I'm a Marine with two kids and a wife who's active duty in the U.S. Coast Guard out of Yorktown. I'm here to let you, the board, know that these mask mandates are against everyone's civil liberties. I served for this great nation for eight years. I served for every American, including myself, expressed their rights freely. You guys are serving the public, which means the employers are we, the people. You serve, and you volunteer your time. The same we, the people, that the founding fathers wrote in the Constitution, they give the power to the people over local and federal government. I'm here to let you know that if you don't reconsider these mask mandates, I will pull my kid out of public school. Public school that is funded by the government, who is mandating you to restrict our kids. These are my kids. I'm the only one that tells them what to do. Your main purpose is to do the work for your employers. If you are doing the things outside of your realm, it is the mama bear's and papa bear's job to put you back in line and know what your responsibilities are. I had to inform my five-year-old that he's going into kindergarten, that his school is requiring, not recommending, a mask to attend. He told me, "Why do I have to wear a mask, Daddy? Am I sick?" I said, "No, son, but the people who want to put you in a mask are sick." I am here to show my kids that what is—it what it is to fight for your freedom looks like. I can't believe I did eight years of service and have to come back to this great nation and see American citizens devour themselves over freedoms that men and women before me and after me have bled and died to preserve our rights, to see people like you hiding behind a board, thinking you have more authority than we, the people. So let me tell you, if you think this is shenanigans, I will let you know. I'm not a lawyer, but you are going down the wrong path, and you have time to repent and make things otherwise, you have to explain in the court of law why you're violating American citizens' rights. First Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, Section One, Title 18 U.S. Code 241, Conspiracy Against Rights, and Title 18 U.S. Code 242, Deprivation of Rights. Whoever, under color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom, will release subjects, any person, in any state, territory, Commonwealth, possession, or district, the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunity secured or protected by the Constitution and laws of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Just kind of putting this all together, these United States also respect civility and respect. And our respect for our rules here is that we do not have the public clapping, that we do not have the public demonstration. So—and that goes for whoever you intend to speak on. I've been encouraged here to go into recess and to call—and to clear the—clear the board—boardroom. We don't have to have public comment. I'm doing everything I can to have the patience and understanding to continue this. So please, please, have respect for our rules and civility. Thank you.
Mr. Michael Hosang.
Good evening. I am Mike Hosang, and I want to express my opposition to your decision to force our children to wear masks during the upcoming school year. I say "your" decision because it is "your" decision. Up front, I need to tell you and state that I'm an attorney employed by the federal government, so I will not be providing any legal advice to the board, and my comments are just that: mine. But what I can do is give you my interpretation of the law. S. 1303 gives school boards discretion on how our children will attend schools. This law does not state that school board must or shall follow CDC guidelines, and that is all they are, is guidelines. But give school board discretion on how to best follow the guidelines for their particular districts. This discretion is for how a board can implement the CDC guidelines. Don't believe me? Then read the reports from the law's sponsor, Senator Donovan, who has come out and said that this bill was not a direct order to school boards, but was to give the school boards flexibility to deal with the coronavirus in their specific districts. Further, if this law was intended to be in order, then there would be no reason to put the phrase "to the maximum extent practicable" in the law. Why would our elected officials put this phrase in the law if this order—or this law was mandatory? If it was in order, then the law would state that the school boards must, shall, will follow CDC guidelines, period. But that is not what the law says. The law includes this phrase to give you, the school board, discretion on how to implement this guidance. And if it were mandatory, why are so many school districts around the Commonwealth electing to make masks optional this school year? If it's the law, they can't, right? But they are following the law to do what is right for their districts, not what may be right for another district, the CDC, the governor, or anyone else, but their district. And by doing what is right for our district, you're doing what is right for our children and for the people who elected you in these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Tobias. I'm a resident of James City County, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the board. First, I have a question. Are any Williamsburg-James City County schools teaching, or are you allowing your teachers to teach any subject related to critical race theory or its euphemisms, such as culturally responsive learning, racial justice, et cetera, in kindergarten through grade 12 curriculum? I don't know if you can confirm that tonight, but I'm going to continue to ask the question until I see an answer. Accusing any white person of white privilege, white supremacy, white nationalism, or white extremism, or white fragility is totally unacceptable and should not be condoned or supported. My concern is for the future of the country that I helped defend for 25 years as a member of the Navy. These teachings are, in fact, racist and actually do harm to our society by institutionalizing systemic racism. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Mr. Tobias.
I'm Susan Hildem, James City County resident and chair of the York-James City-Williamsburg NAACP Education Committee. School board members and Dr. Heron, I am here to reiterate support for the upcoming changes in American history curriculum to include more information on African-American history. We at NAACP support a more inclusive history curriculum that recognizes the great contributions from a broader spectrum of American society. While I am here, I would like to share some ideas and concerns that came from our NAACP Back to School Forum last week. Based on a presumably rare observation, one parent expressed concern about disrespect towards students that she observed. In addition, parents have been concerned about teachers' low assessments of their children's abilities, and parents have been frustrated that their children were placed in classes that were below their abilities. I asked the school board to monitor these issues and address them. There was an idea that came from our forum that I asked you to consider as well. It would be helpful, in this technology-dependent era, to provide training for parents in formats—to—in formats that would help them to connect and communicate with their children's teachers. A session or two at the beginning of the school year could be very helpful to engage parents to participate more actively in their children's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildem.
Ms. Beth Hall.
Say it again.
Good evening. I was—had something else planned to say, but I just can't do it right now. So I'm going to say something off the grid here. I'm quite sad. To be in a room of adults who are behaving this way is just—I—I have no words. I can't believe that—and there are children in the room that adults would be going so far to make these kind of statements. Respect. I've—I've stood before you over, what, 27 years, coming to this board? I have never, in my—I've been so ashamed of a group of people. If you went in to get surgery and you were laying on the gurney, and your doctor said, "Don't need a mask, don't need gloves," it's okay, you'd get off that gurney as quickly as you could. You would. And this room of people talking about not wearing masks—I have an underlying medical condition. I don't have to wear a mask because of that. But I do it because I care about you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and all of you. I care about you, and that's why we do it. It has nothing to do with your rights. It has to do with care of each other. And there is a virus called the coronavirus that is spreading wild. I know people who have died, and it's quite sad to think that this is, again, a room of adults that are behaving this way. Where's the golden rule? Where is your God? My God says we don't behave this way. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you for sitting up here and being masked, board members. I'm glad that we have you watching over our children, because I—I wouldn't want to teach in a school where there's unmasked children who can't be vaccinated, even if they wanted their children to be vaccinated. They can't be vaccinated right now. So the teachers can't—oh, you're going to have children—teachers that are going to quit. I don't understand. This is a simple thing. We wear shoes when we go into a grocery store, we wear a shirt—
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
We do these things. And please make sure that—when you ask people to stop talking, ask them to leave.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Ms. Donna Priest.
I got the time right here.
Doesn't make a sound. They don't know.
They don't when I say something.
Good evening.
Just keeping time.
My name is Donna Priest, and I am in James City County. I come here as a parent who has had three children at all levels of the school system. I still have two boys in high school, a former teacher for over a decade in Fairfax County Public Schools, and overall, I have been impressed with our hard-working and dedicated teachers and principals in this county. I think it's overall really very well-run. My concern is not really so much what I've seen in the county. It is the national trend that is teaching that some students are inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive because of their race or their sex. I am concerned that some students maybe feel—made to feel guilty or distressed simply because of their skin color or their sex, and that the value of hard work that leads to success is now sometimes taught as an oppressive tool. And I really have no idea where the county stands on this, because I haven't heard. I don't have any horror stories to tell, so hopefully, like, this hasn't been taught. But my question is, will our students be subjected to this teaching, or will they be taught to value people on character and not their skin color? So I am hoping that you could address that, and also, we have a lot of new teachers I see coming this year, and I know what they're teaching in some of the colleges, and that's basically that judge people on their skin color, and some people are oppressors, and some just because of their skin color. So is that something that will be taught to our children, or will they be protected from that?
Thank you, Ms. Priest. That's the end of citizens' comments. Move on with our agenda. Consent agenda. Item 7.01, approval of minutes from 7:20-21 meeting. 7.02, approval of minutes from 8:03-21 meeting. 7.03, approved release from compulsory attendance, case number R-22-01. 7.04, release from compulsory attendance, case-r22-02. 7.05, create policy AD, educational philosophy. 7.06, create policy AE, school division goals and objectives. 7.07, create policy GCL, professional staff development. 7.08, create policy IA, instructional goals and objectives. And 7.09, revise policy IGD, extracurricular activities. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move.
Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.01, approval of financial report, monthly bills, and payroll, July 2021. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for July 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.02, personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented this evening. I believe there was an amendment, actually.
Yeah, that was as presented.
Okay.
This evening.
Excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.04, approval of authorization to permit city-county use of school buses. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the authorization to permit city-county use of school buses.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there any discussion? This is an authorization that we give every year to allow the city and the county to use our school buses for their events, and they pay appropriately. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.04, approval of the purchase of technology equipment for portable classroom use. Can I have a motion, please?
I move we approve purchase and installation request for technology equipment for new classroom terrae lurs at Stonehouse, Norwich, J Blaine Blayton, D.J. Montague, Clara Bird Baker, Laurel Lane, and James River Elementary Schools to Op-Tech for $124,743.
Thank you for that A-plus motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.05, approval of fiscal year '23 budget calendar. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.06, approval of American Rescue Plan Act SIR III funding plan. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the American Rescue Plan ARP Act SIR III funding plan.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.07, approval of amendment to fiscal year '22 grants fund budget. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve amending the FY '22 grants fund budget to... this is a big number, $22,262,577.70.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. Item 8.08, revised policy AC, nondiscrimination. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to revise policy AC, nondiscrimination, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just wanted to recognize before we move forward that we did have lively discussion in our last meeting around these policies, 808, 809, and 18. While I am not prepared to support this policy or the next two, it is from my own belief that these policies do endanger children that have agenda to support nature, and so not prepared to do that today. But I also want to say that I do respect my colleagues here and their perspectives and what they added to the conversation in the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Dr. Beers?
Yeah. I would, as I did at the last meeting, I respectfully, totally disagree with Mr. Dowell's interpretation. As I said at the last meeting, groups of individuals have been discriminated against, have been dealt with violently in our country, and there has been a reason why they were specifically identified. It's not to say that all students are protected from everything. To me, it's not specific enough. These people have been harmed in these various groups. We have in our country people who discriminate against other people based on their religion, their ethnic background, their sexual orientation, their gender identification. And if we do not indicate specifically what those groups are, then it's just left wide open. And I would also say that the regulation that we are supposed to be responding to does not say suggest, or advise, or guide. It says required. So I don't know how else to respond to that, simply because the word "required" is in there. So once again, you are certainly entitled to your opinion. I just don't agree with it. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just reiterate what I said at our last conversation. I think words are powerful, and the one thing that this board is responsible for and can do is to pass policy that makes all of our students feel welcome, safe, and secure. So the old adage, "Sticks and stones will break your bones, but words will never hurt you," is not true. So I think these words are powerful, and it needs to be inclusive. And this policy and the two subsequent policies are including categories of students and children who heretofore have felt left out and unsafe. So for that reason, I wholeheartedly support this policy and the subsequent two.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Any other discussion? Thank you. I'm obviously going to vote in support of this policy. I do appreciate the discussion amongst my board colleagues and the civility of the discussion, even though they were on opposing sides. I think that's a great example. So without any further discussion, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
No.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
No.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.09, revised policy GBA, prohibition against discrimination and harassment. Is there a motion? Can't do it myself.
Mr. Chair, I move to revise policy GBA, prohibition against discrimination and harassment as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
No.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
No.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. 8.10, revised policy JB, equal educational opportunities, nondiscrimination, harassment. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to revise policy JB, equal educational opportunities, nondiscrimination, harassment, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I think Ms. Ombi beat you to it, Dr. Beers. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
No.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
No.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to 9.01, design progress update on the War Hill High School auxiliary gym design. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're delighted to bring you progress on the update on the War Hill High School auxiliary gym design, and Mr. Snipes will introduce the item and our guests this evening. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, school board chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's information and discussion item, the design progress update on the War Hill High School gym supports goal 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the strategic plan. If you recall, in May of 2021, the board awarded the architectural design of the War Hill Auxiliary Gym to HBA Architecture. The project will include architectural services to produce detailed design, construction drawings, specifications, contract documents, and to obtain the necessary related regulatory approvals for the construction of the auxiliary gym at War Hill High School. WJCC standard operating procedure directs the architect to provide the board with periodic updates on the progress of the project, so you will be seeing Mr. Ross periodically over the next 30, 60, and 90% of design. Again, Mr. Ross is here to present the updated War Hill auxiliary gym design. Mr. Ross?
Good evening, Chairman Kelly. My pleasure to be here this evening to give you a brief update. So the image that you have before you shows where space was reserved for a future auxiliary gym. In fact, it was a bid alternate in the original War Hill High School project, and we are moving forward with design and the general configuration. Next slide. So this is the auxiliary gym. The large, blue-colored shape is the main auxiliary gym area that is in that infill area that I showed on the previous slide. We are providing a full-size basketball court, telescoping bleachers to seat 207. This court and the room size is equal to the size of the Lafayette High School auxiliary gym. In addition to those spaces, we are also providing a wrestling room slash multipurpose room that can be used for multiple functions, men's and women's restroom facilities, so this can be used as a standalone facility after hours without opening up the rest of the school, along with various storage facilities and mechanical space. We are designing this facility to be a storm shelter in accordance with ICC 500 storm shelter standards and also the FEMA tornado hurricane standards, so it will be able to withstand 160 mile-per-hour winds, working very closely with Sarah Rush and Barbara Watson with JCC to determine and also implement their guidance of this project. To that end, we are providing standalone, separated facilities for utilities, like bringing in a separate power source, a separate generator. Water lines coming in will be separate from the main gymnasium and rest of the building, so in the event that something happened to those utility services for the main building, we would still have the shelter operational. So these are some elevations of the proposed new construction. The key phrase in all of this is match existing. We are trying to match existing brick materials, roofing materials. There are three colors of brick, gray metal siding, and trying to make it appear as if when this project is completed, the auxiliary gym was always part of the original building. This is a 3D view of what will be the secondary entrance for the public to the auxiliary gym, and also where the students will exit the locker rooms to go out to the track and field facilities. And then just a brief review of the timeline. We are currently in mid-August, so this is the first board update. We have just submitted our 35% construction documents to your school board staff, and they are in the process of reviewing that. We'll begin the value engineering process, and we'll be coming back to you in October with value engineering recommendations. Moving forward with the design, various submittals in November, and then in January, coming back to you again to present the final design. Hoping to get out to bid in February and March, receive construction bids in March, and come back to you in April with recommendations for a word of construction contract, contractor being construction in May, and then construction complete in the late summer of 2023 for occupancy for that school year. That'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Right?
Yes.
Any questions? Dr. Beers?
Yeah. I'm curious. You may not have this, but my assumption is that you've taken a pretty close look at the existing gymnasium, all the different areas there. I'm just curious. I know where the wrestling team tried to practice. How is this going to be different from what they had before? It looks much better, for one thing, but I'm just curious about that. Is it...
The wrestling room will be large enough to accommodate a full-size high school wrestling mat with about an eight-foot buffer on one side, so it'll be pretty generous. It'll have a high ceiling, so it can also support other sports like cheerleading and gymnastics.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Yeah. Mr. Ross, I noticed on there, there's no changing facilities. There must be inside the building. Is that correct?
Or locker rooms?
Yeah.
The locker rooms are already there for the high school.
Can you show me on that map where they are?
Sure. I think if I can go backwards.
On the left side of the gym.
I'm sorry.
So as you were looking at that plan, the new construction in color, the Boys and Girls Locker Room to the right-left of that, right across the hallway.
Oh, okay.
That they would be able to go from the locker rooms into the auxiliary gym and also into the existing gym.
So the bathroom facilities are basically just that?
Bathrooms and one handicap-accessible shower to the new bathrooms.
What kind of shower?
Handicap accessible.
Oh, handicap. Okay, thank you.
Can we not back it up? Technology these days is just can't get it. Oh.
Oops.
Any other... Ms. Cook?
Thank you. So my role on the board has taught me to be concerned and suspicious about value engineering. And so in October, when you come back, I'll just have a lot of questions probably, because generally speaking, some things... of questions probably, because, yeah, generally speaking, some things, decisions are made in the name of value engineering that then, when construction starts, you sort of wonder what people were thinking.
It's a process, and the board traditionally hires a third-party
Right.
value engineering contractor.
Right.
Who I'm sure has already been engaged.
Yeah, and so, in the past, this board has asked for a fairly high granular level of information, and so, I just will probably ask for that this time as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Currently in the process of this value engineering discussions with a, currently in the process of discussions with an annual contract for James City County for the value engineering.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to that in October.
We were able to get the floor plan image upside of the team locker rooms right to the left there.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ross, but I also have a comment. I want to
Ms. Young?
segue on or add to what Ms. Cook said. I do, and we'll be very interested about the value engineering, because we have voted on value engineering, and when you see it in practice in the building, I have not thought that I made the best decision, so I would really, really will be asking about how this is going to affect the movement, for example, size of areas and things like that, because I think that will be critically important for the way that these facilities are supposed to be used. So, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, the only other question I had, because I have a particular interest in this. I see where value engineering, the value engineering process is complete. When does that start? When does somebody come in and start doing that?
So, right now, the value engineering process starts right now. We're in conversations with someone on annual contract.
That's actually going on while you're going through the process?
Yes. We plan that by early September, the value engineering process will be complete, and so that we can discuss with Mike, and then bring this back to the board with the recommendations.
So, when that process is complete, we'll get that same kind of information that we've had before?
Right. The same information.
Cost and the change.
Right. The same information that we provided you for the James Blair Project will provide you similar information.
Ms. Young?
Yes. When you come back and you bring back the value engineering, can you please bring back the original picture and what it will look like after value engineering, please, and some size? I mean, if there is narrowing of an area or something like that, I'd like to see that.
Any other? Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. I appreciate that. Very excited about having this resource available for War Hill and share my colleagues' concerns with the value engineering process. Get hit with that in my day job, too, so. Nine point zero two, Forward WJCC Schools. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're pleased to bring you another Forward WJCC Schools presentation. And this evening, one of our health team experts is with us to provide an update on COVID and all things surrounding that. It's a very important time of year for us as we prepare for the return of school, and our main objective is to have students there five days a week and safely. So, we're very pleased to have Dr. Dolan with us this evening. Thank you.
High School Board members, it's good to see you all again. I'm Carrie Dolan, and I'm an epidemiologist, and I have a PhD in healthcare policy. I'm also the mom of a student at James River, and, as I've mentioned before, I went to Williamsburg James City County Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. Usually, when I talk to you guys, Chris Powell is here. Chris is a pediatrician with CHKD. She is doing a similar presentation tonight for another group, and she shared the slides with me, and we worked together on the information that we're presenting to you today. So, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you. Getting started, you don't need an epidemiologist, and you don't need a complicated mathematical model to tell you where COVID is headed right now. So, the Delta variant is here. It's highly contagious. Vaccination rates aren't as high as we'd like them to be, and so, it's moving through the community. That being said, we have tools that we know work really well. So, we've got these vaccines. We know masks really work, and it's important that we work together to think about how we can keep our kids in school in front of a teacher five days a week. So, I'll just say one more thing about that slide, Daniel. Some of us like these mathematical models. I'm one of those people, and the one that I like the most is the one coming out of UVA for Virginia. And what that model is continuing to tell me is that we are looking at an increase of cases moving through the rest of the fall. These models aren't perfect, but they do give me some pieces of information to be able to think about my own next best steps. So, thinking about being in school together five days a week and in front of a teacher and working together to come up with that plan, that's the commitment that Williamsburg James City County has made, and it's supported by all the big guns. So, CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, World Health Organization, the Department of Health, and the Department of Education, all tell us that we need to stay open, that kids need to be at school, and that we have to be fully open. I really think that we can do that, and I think that we can be successful if we focus on our strategies that we know that work, if we focus on masking and if we focus on vaccination. So, we've already heard a lot about the masking requirement that we know that exists and was rolled out from the governor's office. That was also supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, VDH, VDOE, CDC, as well as others. And the reason that that masking requirement is there is that it's one of the main ways that we have to keep our kids in school. And so, it allows us to stay in the classroom and to be in front of a licensed educator. The question that most parents are asking me lately is, why do we have to do this universal masking thing? And in particular, they ask me, why did I get my kid vaccinated? Because I did that so that they didn't have to come to school in a mask. Well, a couple of things, I say. So, first off, earlier in the summer, we thought that if you got your vaccine, that you weren't part of the transmission cycle, so that you were taken out of the equation. What we know now is that you can get COVID if you're fully vaccinated, and you can give it to other people. So, not all of our kids can get the vaccine, right? You have to be 12. So, our little kids can't get the vaccine, and we have a mixed match at the middle school level of who can get them. The other thing that I like to remind my friends is that our school system is designed to teach and educate our kids, and they are trained in curriculum and in education, and they're not trained in public health, and they're not equipped to launch and sustain a full public health intervention. So, if we were going to be doing different mitigation strategies in different buildings in different ways, then that's going to require a lot of bandwidth, and it's going to take time away from our kids focusing on education. And so, by having a consistent system across the school system, it not only keeps our kids in school, but allows our teachers and our administrators to focus on teaching and focus on their curriculum, and not to have to police what's going on with individual students, which is a concern. And then, finally, I've already mentioned, we have lower vaccination rates than we would like. If vaccination rates were higher, then we might be able to get rid of these masks, but we're just not there quite yet. I think we are going to get there at some point, but we're not there now. Another thing I like to remind my friends who've had their children vaccinated is that that's really keeping your kids in school, because one of the biggest things that's taking our kids out of school is if they become exposed, if they're near somebody who tests positive. So, if you have a kid that's fully vaccinated and they come into contact with someone who's COVID-positive, they can still continue to attend in-person school. They can still participate in other activities. We're just monitoring to see if any symptoms develop. The same is with these masks. So, I look at these masks as the main way that my kid gets to stay in elementary school. If he's wearing his mask and the kid next to him is wearing his mask and they're three feet apart, if my kid is next to a COVID-positive kid, he can still stay. He can still go to school, and he doesn't have to go home and isolate and quarantine. So, and that's conditional on them wearing them correctly and they're fitting right and all that kind of stuff. All right. So, the next thing that I get asked by teachers is, what's up with this distancing? What do I have to do? So, as educators, most of us don't like to have to be really far away from our students when we're teaching. We want to be close to them and interact with them in some way. We were all trained to do in-person kinds of teaching methods. So, being far away, it doesn't always work for us. What everyone is saying is that we need to keep three feet of distance to the greatest extent possible. So, what we need to focus on is these vaccines and our masking. Those are your big guns. That's the biggest bang for your buck. After that, we're looking at ventilation, and then if you can distance, then that's really great. The places that you really, really need to distance are the cafeteria, where these kids might not be masked, and if you're a teacher that is doing something like singing or playing instruments where they also might not be masked. It's important that people know, though, that distancing is not a replacement for masks. You're not getting the biggest bang out of your buck for distancing. You're getting it from the vaccinations and the masking. The other thing people want to know is, can my kid get on the bus in a couple weeks? And we only have one study that I found that is methodologically rigorous enough to look at that looks at transportation, and it was actually done in private schools in Virginia. And that one study tells us that there's no transmission linked to bus transportation. I'd like to have more studies and more conclusive evidence to be able to say that buses are indeed, you know, the safest place to be, but I do feel very comfortable that if kids are on a bus in a mask and then those windows are down, that COVID's not going to be spreading on the bus. So, I've talked about the masking. I've talked about the vaccination. I've told you about the distancing, and what I think is incredibly important is for us to look at these mitigation strategies that we now know don't work. Our teachers have a lot to do, and they can't be working on mitigation strategies that don't do anything for us, like that don't have any protective effect. So, this is the list of things that we've found that are less useful. So, spending your time cleaning surfaces many times a day isn't as useful as we once thought it was. We don't need to be doing daily temperature checks when kids come into the school. Our teachers don't need to be behind plexiglass, and kids can go to recess without their masks. We need to encourage group activities and not try and take these things away. So, field trips, assemblies, that kind of stuff can be done safely in masks. We no longer think we need to cohort our students, so teachers don't need to be making daily seating charts for where people are and trying to keep those kids stuck to one single space. The kids can move around in class and still have a low transmission rate. We don't need to have the arrows on the floor anymore telling people that they can go one way sometimes and another way another. And we also don't need all kids to have their own separate personal items. This is because we are learning, you know, COVID isn't living very long on surfaces, so it's okay if kids share these kinds of things. And then, finally, I've talked to you about transportation, and we think that we can have buses fully loaded with people wearing masks and be successful this fall. So, in summary, we're really focusing on trying to keep our kids in school, trying to keep them in front of a teacher five days a week. The way that we can do that is to get a vaccine if you're eligible. We really want to create a circle of vaccinated people around those people that aren't eligible. So, for our little kids that can't get one, their parents can get one, their coach can get one, their teacher can get one, their counselor can get one. All of that helps decrease transmission. We're also recommending the masking indoors, but outside, they can do their resource without the mask, resource without the mask. And then, really, we've had these changes in quarantine, which I mentioned. So, if you're vaccinated, fully vaccinated, you don't have to stay home if you're exposed. If two people are in masks and they're three feet apart, you don't have to stay at home. So, the next thing I want to talk about is communicating. So, people ask me a lot, why COVID can't be like the flu? I mean, I must get asked this daily. COVID is not the flu. It's very different. So, the flu has, COVID has a higher level of mortality. It transmits more quickly than the flu. But one of the main reasons that COVID isn't like the flu is that with the flu, as a community, we've accepted a certain level of that in our population. We know what risk we're willing to tolerate with the flu, and we all come into the world with that understanding. We haven't gotten to that place yet with COVID. So, this fall, we're going to be having families and students, groups of people coming back together for the first time, who have very, very different risk tolerances. And so, I think it's incredibly important to foster a healthy community, that we communicate, you know, where we are in this spectrum. And so, last spring, I developed the scale. It's called Know Your Number. We've used it at William &amp; Mary, and we've used it in another places. If you're a one, it's a one-to-five scale. If you're one, you're on complete lockdown. Sorry, I need a sip of water.
You got all kinds of water here.
I got one. I brought it.
I think Mrs. Ombi has a stack next to her there.
I'm ready. I'm ready with my water. If you're one, you're on complete lockdown. So, maybe you have a kid that has a condition that makes you really nervous and has some sort of compromised immune system. You might not be leaving your house very much. Conversely, a five is ready to get on a plane and hop off to the Maldives without their mask. We're going to have ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives all coming into our school, and I've found that this is a really helpful mechanism to communicate where we are. It gets rid of the judgment, and it gets rid of the explaining, and it allows our kids to just say, hey, I'm a three. So, we don't go inside houses with other people who aren't vaccinated, but we can hang out outside and play in the front yard. And so, it's just one tool that I've had and I've found success with, and so, I wanted to share that with you tonight. That's all I have to tell you. I don't know if you have any questions.
I'm sure there are no questions or comments from board members. Who'd like to start? Ms. Young would like to start.
One that I've been reading a lot about is the COVID test.
Uh huh.
I mean, where do you stand on the fact that they were saying that when you get the COVID test, that you also test positive if you have the flu or a cold?
So, when it comes to those clinical questions, Chris is really the better one to answer that, because she's a medical doctor and I have a PhD. So, I know a lot about the mitigation strategies, but I don't know a whole lot about the actual testing procedure and then what happens, like who tests positive, when, and where. So, I'm happy to take that question to Chris, and we could get that information back to you.
I would appreciate that. And then, as I'm looking at this information that you've given us tonight, most of this comes from the agencies that were listed on there. Do you have any other sources of information that we might be privy to?
Yeah. So, I mentioned that I am an epidemiologist, and I have hundreds of peer-reviewed journal articles that I read weekly. So, it's not pulling, I'm not pulling this stuff straight off of webpages from those agencies and using the agency's statements to formulate my own opinions. That's all coming from peer-reviewed research in credible, top-tier medical journals.
Right. And I don't claim to be in that category at all, but then, I guess, are you conducting any personal studies of your own at this time?
So, I've done, we did a masking adherence study at CDC, William &amp; Mary that I ran with CDC, because we wanted to know if our students were wearing masks, and if they weren't, then we needed to know how to shift our policies in order to address either high or low adherence. So, I did that study. Then, I did a study of 119 countries and looking at the mitigation policies based on country-level income, and looking at which strategies were most effective or least effective based on the income of that country.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then, I have another study on vaccinations in Kenya and Malawi, and another one in South Africa.
I guess I do have one more question, because one of the statements you made was that we're finding out that even people that are vaccinated can still pass on COVID. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. So, we now, this is one of the big shifts in why we need to wear masks, even if you're vaccinated. It's because, if you're, we now know that you're not outside of the transmission cycle if you get a vaccine. So, we used to think that you were, that you couldn't get it or give it. Now, we know that you can get it. You might be asymptomatic, and you can give it to other people, even if you have those vaccines. But, you're not likely to get sick and not likely at all to die.
Do you have a peer-reviewed study that talks about that?
Sure.
Yeah, I would be interested in seeing that, because one of the things that I'm also reading about is that people that have gotten the COVID shot, have gotten, been vaccinated, are the ones that are now passing the COVID around. So, I mean, I'm very concerned about where we're headed, because we're now, we're in Delta, and then there's Lambda that's also out there, and then there's going to be Phi, and, I mean, how long are we going to stay masked until we've gone through every Greek letter?
Yeah. So, I mean, you're right. What happened earlier in the summer is people thought they were outside the transmission cycle. So, me included, I think a lot of people in June and July did things differently than we are doing right now this week in the late August. And people stopped wearing masks when they went into Harris Teeter or wherever they were doing. People took vacations in different ways than they were before, and now we're seeing us start to implement mitigation measures to try and make sure we cut down on transmission. I think it's important that you know we are going to have COVID here for a while. Even when this fourth surge decreases, it's not going away, and so, we need to work together as a community to figure out how we're going to live with this in our population long-term. We're always going to have an endemic level of it. It's just right now, we're at a surge, and we have to get it down to a level that we're comfortable with in order to maintain it long-term.
Yeah. Do you know how many cases of COVID we have in James City County this week?
Um, I went to look it up this morning. Daniel, do you know? Did you look it up?
Based on the CDC COVID daily tracker, James City County and Williamsburg are in the high category.
I know, but I want the number.
Oh, sure. I'll look that up while we're talking.
I mean, I've been looking it up, and all I get is the number of deaths, and since last week, there's been one additional death in James City County from COVID. So, I'd be very interested in the numbers, because last year, when we had presentations, we had specific numbers of people that were being, that had tested positive for COVID, and now we're not seeing, I don't see, I've looked at the dashboard, and it seems to be much more general. But I'm very concerned that at some point, we're going to have to be brave, and I don't see that masking is the answer to being brave. So- see that masking is the answer to being brave. So that's my personal opinion, that my board knows where I stand.
Yeah, and I think that it's important that these policies are reevaluated. So for me, we're at this particular phase of the pandemic, where we're trying to keep the numbers low to keep our kids in school. So it's not about, to me, it's not about death and dying, it's about education and access to it. I mean, some of your people that had public comments had some really great comments about why our kids need to be in school and why they need to stay there. And we're just not at a place as a community where if we have a surge of a lot of cases, where people are going to be sending their kids to school, and we're going to be pulling them all out, quarantined, and we don't have any virtual option. So we really need to keep them in school and in front of a teacher. And so for me, the masking and the vaccination is keeping them in school. It's not that I think that my kid is going to die.
Right, no, and I am totally on board. I want kids in school. That's the number one priority, I think, for our school board. Thank you.
Mr. Dell.
I'll get you that article.
Mr. Dell, thank you.
Dr. Dolan, you just mentioned something about the necessity to keep our students in school, and so we keep the masks on them so that if there is illness in the classroom, it's not an exposure. Mr. Keever or Dr. Heron, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, please. I think I just learned that if a student did have to go home because of an exposure, that student chose not to wear their mask, and they were within three feet of a student, they got, they became ill, they were quarantined, there is still an option to have them connect with a teacher. Is that what I learned this past week, I believe?
Let me make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. You didn't give us necessarily a level. You were speaking hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
About a student who is a close contact designation, was not in a mask, and subsequently quarantined for a period of time.
Yes, sir.
And you're asking whether or not he or she would have access to a teacher.
Yes, sir.
During that period of time.
Yes, sir.
It would be our goal to be able to provide instructional services for that student. Now, the extent to which that can be live and synchronous on a day-to-day basis, and in a similar vein to what it might have looked like last spring, is something that we would have to really carefully consider.
Is there any grade level at this point where we're able to achieve that?
It's much more likely at the secondary level, where we're using the aisle in classrooms, that if there were a number of students quarantined, potentially, they could be attached to the classroom through Zoom and through the aisle. So that possibility is still there, and we're right in the middle of looking at everything to be ready to respond to whatever happens on the first day of school. That's going to be more difficult at the elementary level. We don't have an aisle in every classroom. However, we have a projector that can be used with Zoom. It's not ideal. We will not have a hybrid schedule. We're there five days a week. So at the elementary, there could be, more likely to be students provided work by the teacher until they return.
Thank you. And my only other question at the moment, I believe, is, I've been asking this question, both publicly and behind closed doors with Dr. Heron. What are the benchmarks? And maybe Dr. Dolan, you can help me understand. What would the benchmark be for our community? Understanding that this now is, I guess, a legislative order, that we abide by CDC recommendation, that students are masked at the start of the school year. That's my best understanding. What would the benchmarks be to get, I guess, from CDC's perspective, to remove masks from students in the school? What does that look like, I guess, now statewide?
So this is also a question that people have been asking since the start of pandemic. People have wanted one number or a couple of numbers that then they can look at and track, and know when those numbers hit a certain point, then something else can happen. And unfortunately, it's not that simple. I mean, literally, there's probably 75 different variables that I look at in order to make policy decisions or policy recommendations to leaders who have to set different kinds of interventions. And it really does depend. What I have recommended is that these mitigation strategies be evaluated regularly, and that that timeline is set and communicated in a way that's clear, precise, and concise, not only to the board, but then also to the community, so that our families know that we are looking at this stuff and monitoring it. And it's not like we've come up with this masking and vaccination thing, and that we are stuck with it or aren't paying attention until next school year. At the William &amp; Mary, we are evaluating policies regularly and looking at things by semester. It might make sense for your school system to look at things in nine-week blocks, in order to know what else needs to be done. What it really is for me is how, the learning loss. So when you can have a certain number of cases, and then have an amount of learning loss that you're willing to accept. But right now, with the level of COVID and the number of cases that are going to be going through, your learning loss is going to be up here. And I think it's going to be higher than what you would be willing to accept.
Thank you. Ms. Ohmby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Dolan. I just want to appreciate the way that you laid out the information. I think it's very easy to understand, and just wanted to reiterate a couple of points for the public. So for me, wearing the masks are critical because, as you mentioned, with regard to quarantining. So if we're all wearing our masks, and we're all mostly three feet away, and someone does have an exposure, then those kids can stay in school. So that's important, I just want to point that out. So even if we are vaccinated, and even if folks can transmit COVID, if we're masked, we can stay in school. So that's important. And then, if, I don't know if Mr. Keever wants to answer this, or I'll pose it to both of you. Just going back to the fact that now in state code, we are required to provide education five days a week in person, not virtually. We're required by state code. Can you expand on that, Mr. Keever?
There is the expectation via the Senate bill and subsequent legislation that it is in-person, five days a week. There are some extenuating circumstances that would be available for particular schools or classrooms, et cetera, as the case needed to happen. If, for instance, a class might need to quarantine, and we would provide a virtual option that way. But the intent is face-to-face, five days a week.
Right. But so, exactly. So that's the expectation. The expectation is not that school divisions will offer hybrid learning. The expectation is that students will be in class in person, five days a week. And then also, just want to make it clear for the listening public and for many of our speakers, so it's not that we are following a CDC recommendation. The governor has now said that all 132 school divisions must follow CDC guidelines. Is that my understanding? Did I hear that correctly? Is that correct?
It was the public, it was the state health commissioner that has a public order relative to K-12 education and wearing a mask. And that order doesn't expire until the order expires. There's no sunset provision on that, currently.
Thank you. So we're not just following a recommendation, we're doing what's required.
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dolan.
And just one note on that. That was for public and private schools, as I recall.
That's my understanding. That's correct. K-12 schools.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here, Dr. Dolan, and for your service to our community and to William &amp; Mary, but particularly to WJCC throughout this pandemic. We really couldn't have done this without you, so thank you so much. I'm going to try to stay on the public health side of things and stay away from clinical. So, and some of this is going to be a little repetitive, but I just want, you know, to make sure that we're clear as a community. So, and it's, some of my questions are in response to some things that we heard from public speakers over the months, and then also some letters and phone calls that we've gotten. So can you just expand a little bit on the, this is a moving target. We're learning more from the science every day, and so what we know today may not be what we know tomorrow. Can you just?
Yeah, I mean, the science is evolving, and it's incredibly frustrating to the general public and us scientists that it's a moving marker. But it is where we are, and the more that we can create a cohesive community that's ready to pivot together, I think the more successful we are going to be.
Thank you. And then about the vaccine, does it, does it work? Does it protect people from, from death and severe illness?
Yeah, I mean, the vaccine definitely works, and there's lots of peer-reviewed publications that support that it decreases, you know, severe illness and decreases death, morbidity and mortality, both.
And can you comment on the virus and its impact on kids? Can kids get sick, and how sick, especially with the Delta variant?
Yeah, so we really need Chris to talk about the clinical outcomes in children, because she's seeing that every day. So she would be more experienced in knowing the symptoms that she's seeing, and especially she could comment on how she's seeing Delta change versus, you know, what we saw last year. I do know that we think kids being out of school, it has severe adverse effects. So one of your speakers earlier cited a whole lot of statistics that were valuable pieces of information about depression and suicide, and how it's important to be in school. And so as a community member, as an epidemiologist, I think that what I'm trying to do is look for tools and ways that we can try and keep us learning together.
Thank you. And then, do masks work?
Yeah, so I did hear in the public comments, somebody say that we didn't have studies that show that masks work. I was on that CDC mask adherence study, and I have a whole file of studies on why masks work, and exactly how, and which ones work, and how much virus is transmitted through different kinds of masks, and the differences between the face shields and the buffs, and the two-ply masks and N95s. And so I'm very confident that masks are effective if you're wearing one of these two-ply masks.
So two-ply masks work?
Yep.
Okay. And then, tying back to your comment about the harm that this pandemic has had on children and being out of school, in your estimation, do masks harm children? Whether that has to do with mental health or other? We know the pandemic does, or has, but masks in and of themselves, are they harmful to children in your view?
I haven't seen any literature that exists that's rigorous and peer-reviewed that showed that masks are detrimental, or that the benefit of masks outweighs, or the benefit of masks somehow makes the risks, what am I trying to say? I haven't seen anything that says that we should not wear masks because something is happening to our kids that would be worse. Does that make sense?
Right. So having them in school with a mask is better than out of school without a mask?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's all. I have some more later, but thanks.
Dr. Beers?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Is now later enough?
No, I meant for, because you all are presenting in a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, part two.
Part two, yeah.
So one question I have is, it says if you're asymptomatic, fully vaccinated, close contacts, do not need to quarantine at home. But if you can, if you can still get the infection with breakthrough infections, is that, what's the logic there?
So this is an exemption for schools, K-12 schools only. It's not an exemption for faculty, staff, administrators, and it's just for the students. And the thought process is that what they need to be doing is watching for symptoms and see if symptoms develop, and then if symptoms develop, then get a test, and then stay home if they're positive. But if they're in school and everybody's wearing masks, then the risk is low. So we are still part of the transmission cycle if we're fully vaccinated, but we're not the same as unvaccinated people.
Okay. Do you, when do you foresee a time that 12 and under can be vaccinated?
So I just looked that up yesterday, and it seems like the emergency use authorization for Pfizer, it might be coming through in September. And if that comes through in September, then I think we might see those available in our community around October, which would be great. It looks like Moderna is a little bit slower, so Moderna, I mean, yeah, Moderna's slower, so Moderna is probably going to be out in January, so we might see that one around spring. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know for sure, but looking at, looking at what I see coming out now, I think fall for Pfizer and early spring for Moderna.
Does your crystal balls have anything about when the FDA is going to approve it?
Wait, does it have let, when the FDA is going to approve it?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't, but I think it's important for people to know that the FDA approval is all related to the packaging and the storage. It's not related to what's actually going on in that vaccine. And so I think that's a piece of misinformation that circulates, and more people are thinking that they're somehow evaluating the actual components of the vaccine, and that's not what's happening. They're looking at how they're packaging and storing it.
Great. How are we distancing in the cafeterias?
Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley may be able to speak to that a little bit more clearly from a school perspective.
So in the elementary schools, for the students to return to the cafeteria and have a normal cafeteria experience for lunch, breakfast, that will be a minimal distancing to happen.
Because in the, in the spring, we were distancing because they were in their, in their classrooms.
That is correct.
So now we're going to, now we're going to take them to the cafeterias. And the old version of a cafeteria that I remember pre-COVID was a somewhat crowded and loud place, generally speaking.
Yes, sir, generally speaking. It's a bit crowded and can be a little loud, as students are talking, eating, and so forth. Many of the elementary schools do implement some type of physical movement, such as a walk and talk, that's tagged to each child's lunchtime, where as soon as children are finished eating, encouraged to clean up their area, dump their tray, whatever, and they have the opportunity to go out, if it's good weather, walk and talk, fresh air, that kind of thing. But yes, it is crowded, but the experience of returning back to the cafeteria, that opportunity.
Yeah, I think we're going to have a challenge there, getting that social distancing, although if we say, if we say three to, three to, three feet if you're masked, obviously in the cafeteria, that defeats the purpose of being in the cafeteria. So I think we have, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that and thinking our way through that, and how we're going to accomplish that mission.
I will say, you know, there was mention about seating charts earlier. Seating charts will be important in elementary school for that particular reason. As an example, going to the cafeteria, should we need to look at contact tracing and where students are seated, that's going to be important. And we've had many discussions at the elementary level about that, as well as when students travel to their centers, art, music, and PE, knowing exactly which students are with together.
Right. And I was wondering if we're going to have to extend lunchtimes in order to, in order to meet that goal as well?
Currently, no. We tend to run anywhere from about 10:50 in the morning to about 1:30 in the afternoon.
You're asking me how much we can extend lunch?
Yeah, there's not much wiggle room there at all.
Okay.
For the secondary, obviously, our cafeterias in the four middle schools and high schools are quite different. So each school will have their own plan, but it will be a challenge. We'll spread out to the greatest extent possible. We are taking opportunities to use our outside areas when possible. But it will be something we'll have to consider. And typically, students do sit in the same area, but obviously, with changing classes and going to the cafeteria, they will be encouraged to spread out, and we will take advantage of space outside cafeterias, the courtyard areas, and areas outside where we have picnic tables to keep them spread out. And we do have, some of our schools have moved to an additional lunch, four lunches versus three.
Great. Okay. All right, thank you. That's something we need to keep in mind. Ms. Hummel?
Thanks, Dr. Dolan, for speaking. And I just, knowing your number, I just wanted to let you know that I'll be using that with all of my students at William &amp; Mary. We're going to actually, in our teams, when we have our students in our teams, we're going to give that chart to them as something, as a discussion point, so that everyone kind of knows where they stand on things and how comfortable they're going to be. So maybe that's something, you know, our school, our classrooms could do too. Just how, what is everyone's comfort level going through a particular situation?
Didn't it used to be four, not five? Was it four, or did I remember? Was it always five?
No, I've always had it five, one through five. Yeah, thanks for letting me know. People seem to like it. It seems to really resonate with people. And I've had a wide group of ages use it, even little kids, even little kindergartners have used it. And I think people want to be heard, and they want to be able to vocalize their fears in a way that makes sense. And I also think having the number system allows people to do that without judgment and without justifying. And it does allow us, a starting place, like you're saying, to foster a dialogue around how we can coexist together, which, again, like I've already mentioned, our ability to work together and successfully pivot is what's going to keep our kids having consistent education for the longest amount of time possible, which is hopefully forever.
Well, I would like to tag along with what Mrs. Hummel said, and thank you and Dr. Powell and the rest of your team. You know, since you've been coming to the school board and working with the school system, you're not the Chicken Littles that, you know, we all need to run and hide. And I think, I think actually, in the, in the winter and the spring, you were kind of pushing us to go back into a hybrid pushing us to go back into a hybrid mode. And, you know, the slide you have here are strategies that are less than useful and things that we used to do very often, which you're recommending that we don't do any longer. I will also agree with the temperature checks. I never bought into that, but that was another story. And so, and so, so we're not looking at, we're not getting guidance from a, from a, oh, the sky is falling and we got to all go run and hide. I mean, we're getting, we're getting very useful, very scientific, very thoughtful, and local data, which has helped guide us. And so, I really appreciate the work that you guys have done in, in helping our school system and helping our community. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, Dr. Dolan, I appreciate everything that you've brought forward to the board. Do you, do you have an email address?
Yes, I do.
Want to broadcast it publicly?
Yeah, do you want me to write it down? I have an email already. I'll write it down for you.
We'll get it for you, Ms. Young. We'll get you the email address, Ms. Young.
I'll get you the email, and then I'll also get you that paper.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your help.
Yeah, Dr. Dolan, thank you very much indeed.
Awesome.
Mr. Chair, we're now going to pivot to another part of the presentation to focus on preliminary outcomes from last year and also our plan to remediate students and help them be successful this year. But before we do that, as, as Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley are getting ready, as part of the presentation, I wanted to, in one slide, give you a very quick update on current student enrollment. This slide provides a nine-year historical perspective of enrollment as of September 30th each year, and this is what's used for funding at the state level. As noted on the chart, our school year 2021, September 30th enrollment on fall ADM was 10,858 students, and that's what our operating budget for fiscal year '22 is built on. Our current enrollment for K-12 stands at over 11,000, 11,097 students, which is 239 students above what we budgeted. And in comparison to the 2019-20 school year, where we had 11,448, we're still 350 students less, but we are increasing. The numbers are changing daily, and specifically, one factor to note that there is still a gap in kindergarten enrollment, which traditionally does come in late. We do have 100 students less than, than what we had a year ago. 80 students less in first grade, 100 less in grade two combined, 280 students at the elementary level. So, there is still a hesitancy, hesitancy for some parents to send students, or younger students, to school at this particular time. That's just a quick overview. We'll keep updating you as time goes on, and I'll provide more information to you via my weekly updates on enrollment as we move forward. And now, Mr. Walker is going to continue with the rest.
Here, can I say one thing? So, this, this graph that we're looking at here, this 10, 10,858 is what we budgeted for this year?
That's correct, sir.
But our, but if we were actually to go where we stand today in enrollment, it's at 11,97?
That's correct, sir. We're up 239.
And if memory serves, our projections that we rely on heavily actually had us going down, not up, this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think that's really, perhaps not a conversation for tonight, but something to kind of think about because, yeah, we're rebounding faster than they anticipated.
Yeah, we're greatly encouraged by the return of students to WJCC, and we encourage everyone to get enrolled now because we will move in and we will stay in.
And so, the one question I also too about kindergarten enrollment, so, so your enrollment right now is 100 less than what we had in kindergarten last year?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Walker's trying to say something, so I'm going to interrupt him here.
Mr. Walker's.
The question I would have is, is how many, how many kindergartners did we have enrolled at this time last year versus where we ended up last year? Because the first week and month of kindergarten, they start rolling in, but.
So, we're actually 100 less than what we were for the September 30th ADM of 1920.
2020.
Twenty.
Oh, nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen slash twenty.
I know. It's almost like last year melded together into, into a couple there. So, we're about 100 off from that 1920 ADM number.
So, my, my concern now is that we're over budgeted, over budget now in August, and I'm just concerned how we're going to adapt to that, but that's for another discussion, I guess. Anyway, I'm sorry, Mr. Walker.
Oh, it's fine.
So, Mr. Walker will start to present the rest of the presentation, and Dr. Worley as well.
So, part two of tonight's presentation will move more into an academic nature. This past year's been an exceptional year with testing. Our schools have really done an outstanding job providing the required tests through modified schedules and even remote testing possibilities. Students and families were encouraged to participate in the Virginia Standards of Learning Tests, the SOL test, and 83% of our eligible grades three through 12 students did participate. Secondary and elementary students who were learning remotely were invited to take their SOL assessment on Fridays when buildings could mitigate and provide the proper environments. Remote students in grades three through eight were also invited to participate in the Virginia Remote Student Progress Test, the VRSPT, which was a brand-new test taken from home, and it cannot be compared to the SOL test, but it was an option that was offered for students who wanted to remain remote and not come in person. They're not similar tests, and those scores are not calculated in the SOL pass rates. And unique to this past year, we actually had 12% of our total students who did not participate in the SOL test and did not participate in the alternate remote test, either due to COVID or non-COVID reasons. Typically, school divisions must meet a minimum 95% participation rate for accreditation purposes, but that was officially waived for this past school year.
So, do you want to jump in, Young, do you want to jump in now, or do you want to wait?
The only question I had, Mr. Walker, is on that enrollment, or Dr. Heron, can he answer? Did that include the Virtual Academy? Does that enrollment include the Virtual Academy?
Our current number, yes.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it does.
That, is that 12% refusal rate comparable to other divisions, or were we an outlier there?
No, I do not believe we were an outlier. There were many divisions that had some higher numbers than us, so quite comparable.
Thank you.
So, we want to share some very raw SOL data with you, even though SOL performance will not be used for the 22, 23 accreditation ratings or federal accountability determinations. The primary purpose, as stated by the Virginia Department of Education, is to inform instruction and to meet the unique academic needs demonstrated by our students. Additionally, the results will serve as a baseline for student growth expectations for the spring '22 SOL testing. This chart shows elementary SOL scores in grades three, four, and five combined for reading and math and fifth grade science, as well as the test I mentioned earlier, the Virginia Remote Student Progress Test. Remember, that was the brand-new option for the students who chose to remain remote. We chose to insert the last SOL data we had from 2018-19 in the oval that's above the bar graphs as just a simple point of reference. But again, I caution you not to compare them. Because of the unique circumstances of the pandemic and the lower test participation rates, there were no retake options, and there was no recognition given for student growth. The VDOE recognizes all of these anomalies, and that's why the scores do not count toward accreditation for any school division in Virginia. At this point, I'll let Dr. Worley come forward to talk about middle school and high school.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. Again, if you look at the slide here on middle school performance, you'll see similarities to elementary. This chart represents raw data for grades six, seven, and eight math and reading, as well as eighth grade science. The 2018-19 pass rates, again, are indicated above the bar graph, and the lower scores do mirror statewide trends, which show lower test performance during the pandemic. You can also see the scores for the children that took, chose to take the test remotely, the VRSPT scores. The next slide also shows us a snapshot of high school SOL performance. High school reading is given to 11th graders each year in WJCC schools. Mathematics calculations include Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. Our science calculations include Earth Science, Biology, and Chemistry. And finally, social studies includes Virginia and U.S. History, World History I, World History II, and World Geography. 2018 overall raw, raw SOL data is also indicated above the graphs. And a reminder of what Mr. Walker previously shared, you can't really compare them because of the unique circumstances of the pandemic and the lower testing participation. Additionally, one important option that was not available, which significantly impacts scores, is the option for our students to retake tests. Although SOL test pass rates do not count towards accreditation, they are an important indicator of unfinished learning and opportunities for us to refocus our teaching and learning when students return to school on August 30th. So, let's take a look at where we were at the end of the school year. And of course, we're not simply waiting for the new school year to begin. We've already begun working with our students. So, in June, we took a look at a number of students who received a failing grade on their report card at the end of the school year. And the numbers there on the screen, the elementary school number represents the fourth nine weeks, and the middle and high school number reflects final grades. It is important to note that these students were among those invited to participate in summer school, where some incredible in-person learning took place. So, taking a look at how we met some needs in this summer, let's look back at our, our forward progress made overall in summer school. We had grades in, overall in grades K through 12, we had 998 students enrolled. This summer, we served 512 elementary students, which is 13.5% of the total elementary enrollment in grades K through four. We had 258 middle school students who were enrolled, or 8% of total grades five through eight. And finally, 228 high school students in grades nine through 12 participated in summer school. And we have some celebrations from summer school. I'll share just a few on this next slide. You'll see that we had four summer school graduates. It's important to note that one of those graduates actually graduated early. We had two participate in our ceremony. We also had 195 students participate in summer school, and they recovered a total of 399 high school credits. And we also had 102 students earn accelerated credits in Health or PE or Personal Finance. Now, Mr. Walker's going to share some more highlights.
We will continue to build on this momentum from summer school when students return to full-time in-person instruction five days a week on August 30th. We will focus on high-quality, first-time instruction and identified priority standards for marking period one. Our content coordinators dug very deeply into the curriculum during the summer to identify key priority standards that will support teaching and learning post-pandemic. The identified standards include the essential skills to support student achievement. This work will continue in collaboration with teacher teams and coordinators for the remaining marking periods. We will continue to use the Canvas Learning Management System to house curriculum and for all students grades K through 12 to access and submit electronic assignments. And collaborative teacher teams will continue across our schools, using common, pre- and post-assessments to gauge student learning, specific areas for review, content mastery, and readiness for some acceleration. Ester funding will be essential in supporting student learning, instructional resources, and increased space with lower class size ratios with additional staffing. This includes eight elementary core teachers that were additional and eight WJCC Virtual Academy secondary teachers. And Dr. Worley?
We also are excited about the high school student advancement coaches, which recently transitioned to graduation coaches for the 21-22 school year. These coaches have already reported to work, and we've been analyzing student data and identifying needs to actively support student growth and success. We're taking a proactive approach and focusing on engaging all students and, and keeping a close look on the, the four cohorts, ninth, 10th, and 11th and 12th grade students, and monitoring them throughout the school year. Our coaches will follow things such as grades, attendance, engagement in school activities, and, and other essential needs that students may have. We also are focusing deeply on our tiered support. And we have, based on student needs from multiple data points, we have our central office personnel that are ready to provide tiered support in our schools. This includes our content coordinators, our academic coaches, and our instructional specialists who will support teachers in the classroom and during planning. As you can see, there's an incredible amount of work happening already, and our teachers are just returning to school. It's going to be a big year, and it will no doubt be one that we continue to face some challenges related to the pandemic, but we are prepared to support our students and their academic achievement. Mr. Chair, this concludes our presentation for the evening, and we are happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Ms. Hummel?
Um, Dr. Worley, the slide that showed how many high school students had received Fs, was that 24%?
No. Let's go. It's the number of students that received at least one F, so in high school, 228, women, sorry, I'm on the participation one.
Yeah, I'm looking, it's right there. It's, it's.
Oh, yes, sorry. So, 868 high school students, yes, received at least one F, and they're taking eight classes. So, there's a number of classes that, that they took at one time.
So, I think we received a couple emails about, about athletic eligibility.
Oh.
Athletic eligibility and the fact that some students aren't being able to play football or other sports because of our existing policies of having, you know, what is it, one F, two Fs, or something like that?
It's, they have to, it's typically five out of six for eligibility, and we did have, we did take a good look at our eligibility pre-pandemic and during pandemic, and we made some alterations to align Williamsburg with, in line with the VHSL, because we did have a tougher policy for being eligible to play athletics. But right now, it's passing five out of six classes.
Is, is, is that something that you guys are looking at because of this huge of a number of students that are getting at least one F, that maybe we could relax some of these, relax this for understanding that this was a crazy year?
We, yes, it is, and we monitor it very closely, but we are going to follow guidelines by the VHSL. We, we will not alter that expectation because the VHSL sets that for us.
So, so.
But we.
The VHSL itself hasn't, hasn't responded to?
For the current year, right now, the, the standard is in place with, with passing classes, but we do monitor that closely, and we will consider anything that they share with us in looking at what we expect.
So, is that something that parents should maybe contact the VHSL about? Or, I'm, I'm just like wondering, what can we tell our parents?
Well, they can certainly reach out to the VHSL for questions, but they can also reach out to, to my office or, or athletic and PE and health coordinator. We are happy to talk with them about the expectations, and athletic directors know the information as well.
Okay, because I just think it, it has been a rough year.
Yes.
And for some kids, being able to, to actually go back and play sports is really, really important for them to just have that normal experience, so.
We are taking a look at that, just so you know, at the middle school level as well.
Well, yeah.
Which is not aligned with the VHSL.
Thank you.
Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley, if we could flip back to the high school SOL.
Sure.
Chart. And I, so I, and I understand that, you know, there are a lot of anomalies, less students took the, the test, and so it's, we're not comparing apples to apples, but I was just curious how we will use this to inform our curriculum approaches, particularly when, like, social science, there seems to be such a, a much bigger drop than, than reading. Like, how will we use this information to inform our instructors? Like, how will we use this information to inform our instructional practices?
Well, we'll obviously look at the data that we do have and look at how the students performed on each of the individual tests within social science. The coordinators will also work with teachers and curriculum leaders, and we'll identify where we, what strands we see were weaker strands and what strands we see were stronger strands and collaborate. And we also have already identified priority standards within a lot of our SOL content work, so we will really attack those priority standards when we're working with students. But we'll take the data that we do have, the small amount from this year, as well as looking at trends and past data. And I think the key to success is really collaborating and having the kids in the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Worley.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I really appreciate your transparency around these SOLs because it's not, you know, pretty to look at, and I understand that we can't really, it's not a direct comparison, it's not apples to apples, but, but it is informational, right? So, so, but I do think that in the interest of sort of transparency, we should, I, I just would like to understand what you're thinking about in terms of recovering from a learning loss. So I sort of have three questions related to that. So how fast do you anticipate getting, getting kids caught up to where they need to be? In your perspective, is this a long game? Is it, you know, nine weeks? Is it a year? Is it two years? I mean, how, how accelerated are you going to try to be to get kids up to where they need to be? So that's for question one of three.
I'll speak to that from the elementary level. I do believe that the work that was conducted and will continue with those priority standards will help us, especially in reading and mathematics. But the use of pre-test will allow teachers to see data, and I think it will really show us what students know or don't know, and that will allow teachers to adjust instruction and then differentiate by student need.
And I understand that, and that's, that's tactical, but just stepping back and saying, okay, as a division.
If I had a crystal ball to.
I mean, I mean, but what do you hope for? I mean, do you hope, I mean, realistic as an educational professional, you guys are the experts, we're not, how fast do you think you can catch kids up? I mean, what do you think is realistic for us to be able to say, okay, educationally, we've put this thing behind us?
I, I can't speak to a specific number to say one nine weeks, two nine weeks, I think.
I mean, but I mean, are you hoping to get it done by this year?
Absolutely.
I think, I think we'll have a better idea once we have students in school and we do those preliminary assessments that tell you so much more than this type of SOL performance where most kids weren't involved, or a lot of kids weren't involved. And so when we start to assess our kids by classroom, by grade level, and teachers get together in their collaborative teacher teams, they really will get a sense of how deep the learning loss is and how strategically to approach that. I think after we go through those preliminary meetings and, and assess where we really are, I think we'd be in a better position to say how far we can go. I do know before the pandemic, we were really on the verge of, of going to deep implementation of collaborative teacher teams, which are operating mostly in math, which is where a significant portion of the learning loss is right now. And if we can implement that process deeply and teachers get together and pre-assess and post-assess and adjust their teaching accordingly, and that's done with fidelity in every single school, I, I would hope that we will make progress this year that's very significant.
Thank you, and I know these questions are blunt, but I'm just trying to boil them down to sort of, you know, layman's terms. So in terms of how, how quickly we think we can make up learning loss across the division, the short answer is we don't know yet, but we'll know more in the next nine weeks, probably.
Right, and I think the state is also introducing formative assessments, which will be given, give us preliminary and better information, as well as they move towards more formative assessments than the traditional end-of-year assessment, and that's something which will be new in, in this coming school year as well.
And, and I know that these results that are in front of us are not conclusive, and they only tell us one thing, and even that isn't clear, but we can assume that some kids maybe even accelerated beyond what we expected at home, and then other kids didn't. So how are you going to address that? I understand collaborative teacher teams, but are you going to group kids by class based on learning loss so that there's clusters? Are you going to do, is it all going to be small group instruction within classes? I mean, are you going to organize?
I think I'll get Kath, Dr. Worley, and Mr. Walker to speak to the collaborative team process, because that does divide kids, students as to where they are academically and leads to the teaching of students at whatever level they're at. So if you may talk a little bit about that, Dr. Worley, in terms of the bonding of kids within the classroom, not, not separate classes, but within the actual classroom.
So I think the beauty of the collaboration and, first of all, just getting our kids back in school, seeing where they are, meeting them at their specific needs, whatever they are, where they are, and then academically assessing what progress they've made or they haven't made. And the beauty of the collaborative team approach is it assesses students on different pockets of information, different skill sets. And so, you know, I may be really great at, you know, solving for X in an equation, but I might not be really great at a word problem. So I might be in a different group of students based upon what content I'm studying. So this collaborative team process allows a teacher to take a good picture, along with the other data points. We, we, you all know this, but we have amazing teachers, amazing teachers here, who are going to meet our kids where they are, and they're going to, they're going to look at a, a number of data points to include assessments on a pre-test and the collaborative team approach. And, you know, what's the past history? Where are this kid's strengths? And we're going to put them in groups and focus on the skills that they need to, to be successful. And it'll give teachers a big glimpse of, or whole group, group instruction, who, who may need to be pushed a little bit to accelerate, who needs a little more help, and it'll give them ideas about how to set up their classroom and what activities will reinforce skills that they need for a certain lesson or for a certain class. And if we continue, the post-test gives you that data, and you continue to reevaluate as you move forward with that in each unit.
Thank you, that, that's very helpful. And then the third question, forgive me for the frankness of it, but I'm looking at those social science scores by, you know, just by way of example, particularly in high school and middle school, where in social science, classes aren't necessarily sequential. You don't need the previous year's class to do well and the next year's class. Are we just sort of accepting that maybe kids just didn't learn that, you know, whether it was U.S. History or Geography perhaps? Are we just, I mean, if they've been through that class, they got to see, maybe they failed the SOL, but we're just, you know, calling it game, a game and moving on to the next year? Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Well, I think we can take lessons learned from this and see what students did do, do well at a distance, you know, through Zoom and not having the teacher there. We, we, you know, I think this is where we see the real value of our teachers in person and how they push those students. But I think that whatever the data tells us by unit or by strand is important, and I think we can learn from that and move on, and I think our, our students will do really well.
But we're not going to go back and try to recapture that or reteach that if they've moved through that.
At the high school level, when they need verified credits to graduate from high school, there may be some circumstances where you have small pockets of groups that come in for what we call remediation, to recapture a skill. If they pass the course and they just need to pass the SOL, we may have pockets of remediation to get a student to where they need to be, to earn that verified credit.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then Ms. Hummel brought up athletics. Can, we have gotten some emails about this as well. Can we get clarity around athletics and masks in terms of, in, I guess, middle school and high school, what, what the status is with that?
Sure, we're following where we were in the spring, student, everything outside, students are not masked. Inside at this point, we are wearing masks inside. We've just relooked at our athletic guidelines for that and met with the A.D.s. They're aware of that, and they should be pushing all that information out.
Okay, so.
Most of our fall sports are outside.
Okay, so, but any inside sports are masked, whether it's practice or, or competitions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anything on, well, one more question, and this has been mentioned a couple of different ways, but I, I just, if we're going to be encouraging students who are not feeling well to stay home, I do think we need to incent that by providing an opportunity for them to engage in learning, because I think the temptation, if there's a test or if there's a certain lesson, particularly for high achieving, you know, students who are thrilled to be back in school, if we really want them to be comfortable staying home and doing, making the right choice, I think we need to make that easy through technology. So, because sometimes it'll be, the pressure to go to school will be hard if it's not, if they're going to miss a class. And then I think this question's for you, Dr. Heron. Are we going to get any information in upcoming months about the percentage of our students and of our faculty, teachers and staff that are vaccinated?
Yes, Ms. Cook, we are currently, have asked staff to provide that information to us by Monday, where we've asked every staff to, to provide official documentation as to whether they are vaccinated or not.
And then, Mr. Chair, just a comment, a couple comments before I pass, pass it on. Last year, for the, during the pandemic, my priority was to keep the division together to preserve the integrity of this really high-quality division, so that it was here for the following year and the year after, et cetera. And so, you know, and I think the fact that we have a hundred and seventy-five new teachers, the vast majority of which are not new to the profession, suggests that that are, the way that this leadership team handled the pandemic worked, because we attracted teachers from other divisions. So I think that suggests that the way we handled it kept this organization strong and moving forward in the future. So congratulations on that, you all deserve a lot of credit for that, because a lot of school divisions cannot say that. And so, but now that we have a vaccine, I think it's a game changer in terms of mitigation strategy. So now, this year, classroom instruction, in-person learning is my, is a, is my top priority, which is why I support the wearing of masks, because it's going to keep kids in school, as Dr. Dolan pointed out. And so mandate or not, governor's order or not, I, I support masks. And I also, Dr. Heron, you know, as you consider moving forward and get that data around vaccines, I support weekly, providing weekly negative tests for unvaccinated employees. I think, I applaud what the city of Williamsburg did and what William and Mary is doing, and, and so as we move forward to try to keep kids in school, I, I support any efforts that you have in terms of making sure we don't have to quarantine and isolate. So, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Owenby.
Just a follow-up question with regard to masks. How are we going to, how will, like, choral students and band students sing and perform and use their instruments with or without a mask?
Dr. Worley, I believe you've got information about that.
Our, our plan is to have our students engage, band, choral, performing arts, all of those things. Our coordinators have a, a list of guidelines to support teachers, which is actually going out soon. They've been talking about them, they're aware of those. It, it does suggest if we can sing outside, sing outside, there's a larger distance between singers singing inside. We are going to continue to wear masks and provide resources that we need, but we're going to do everything we can to support those classes and those teachers so that they can engage.
And so likewise, band students will, will be further apart, and some will wear masks and some won't, depending on the instrument that they're playing.
Right, and it depends, it also depends if they're inside or outside. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
I would just like to say, say one thing. I think it's, it's, I'm going to touch on a little something that Ms. Cook said. It's really going to be difficult, I'm assuming, to have the situation of, of dual teaching this year, correct? I mean, so I think that the, the expectation is that got to come to school, and if you aren't in school, it's going to be like pre-COVID days, where just like if you were sick five years ago and you missed five days of class, the teacher would give you homework to catch up on, but you're, you didn't have an expectation that you would be able to have some kind of a, a virtual environment and, and be able to participate. I mean, like, am I, is that the direction you guys are, are going? Because at some point, you got to go back to the way we were.
We've learned a lot through COVID, and we've got a lot more technology and ability to deliver a dual classroom. So I don't know, Dr. Worley, who wanted to speak to that in terms of our, our capabilities. Obviously, our intention is five days a week, all students in person, but in the event of having to isolate some students from school, then, then we do have options.
I think we're keeping our options open as far as, as Dr. Heron said, for instance, if we had a whole class that needed to quarantine, we, we don't want it to be something where someone can just randomly each day log in, but we want to use the technology wisely. And we also will take advantage of not just the live instruction, but our, our Canvas platform, which allows teachers to post videos, PowerPoints, activities, and engage with the student and provide them information. We also have, you know, on Zoom is a good way to collaborate and even do some online remediation opportunities or after-school groups if, if a student needs extra assistance. And I think we're all in at the beginning to do everything we can to get our students engaged and back and on, and on track where they were pre-pandemic. So again, it's resources that we have out there, but we want to use them wisely, want to take our lessons learned and plan efficiently for that.
Thanks, because that, that does clear, I mean, we have all these wonderful things that we've learned. So actually, what I'm hearing you say is that for children that are sick and miss, that it's going to be, it's going to be even better for them than it would have been pre-pandemic had they missed class, because there's, there are these new technologies, new resources. So even if someone has like an appendectomy and they're out for a week, you know, they have a better chance of getting caught up with better skill, better technology than ever.
And that's correct, and it's not a hybrid option, so you can't opt to do that every day. It's only an option used when you're unable to be in the classroom because of quarantine or illness. It's not, we're not, by law, every student has got to be in school five days a week, and that's, that's what we want to do.
Thanks.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hummel, for asking that question. I just wanted to add clarity for my perspective on this, which is our, our standards, for one, you said should send your child to school during this pandemic are slightly different than they were. So when we get out of a pandemic, absolutely, I agree, like, if you miss school, you miss school, yes, technology makes that better. But now, and it used to be, you had to be fever-free, diarrhea-free, vomit-free for twenty-four hours without medication. Now we're asking people to be a little more cautious than that. And so I was just suggesting that we need to incent the right choice during a pandemic, not beyond the pandemic, just to be clear. Yeah.
Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Dr. Worley, just want to highlight your comment. So we will continue to use both Canvas and View, because Canvas was robust, and so, but I know that it was slightly more difficult at the elementary level. And so maybe Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley can speak both to, to what will that look like for our students and our families this year?
Sure, our families and students will still have access to Parent View and Student View, and we will be using Canvas to support all of our secondary classrooms. And that's, the teachers will load assignments, communicate through Canvas. We also have some other communication tools that we use, but those for instruction, Canvas will be the primary one.
For secondary?
Yes.
So for elementary, there's a little bit of a shift there. Curriculum for teachers housed in Canvas, they're accustomed to that. The shift will be getting the students acclimated to Canvas and being able to access those resources and materials that the teachers may post up and have available for them.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Uh, thank you very much, Dr. Heron. What, what, what?
I, I just had a question about.
Ms. Young, sorry, I apologize.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly. On, on Canvas, are, I mean, one of the things I heard was videos, are teachers required to, to post things on Canvas? Does every teacher post their assignments? I'm not familiar, I don't have kids in school. So I guess my question is a general question about what is on Canvas that would help a student who, who is sick?
Yes, we do have students, I mean, we do have teachers who post class information, activities, communicate through Canvas, and a syllabus at the high school level will be posted in Canvas. We do have varying degrees of how that is, depending on the course and the grade level. That's one of the things that our coordinators are working with teachers this year to, to be consistent with how we access Canvas. There's a lot of way, you know, some teachers actually use some of the modules on campus to a greater degree than others, but we do put the majority of the curriculum, the content, they submit their work through Canvas, quizzes, things of that nature. But now that we're in person, we'll have the ability to do both.
Okay, I, I think I need to see it.
Sorry, Ms. Young, I apologize for that. Sorry, Ms. Young, I apologize for that. Any any other comments from board members? Dr. Heron, Mr. Walker, Dr. Worley, I really appreciate you coming tonight. We got a lot of work to do this coming school year, you know, as we go back into the classroom five days a week, and although the first week is only four, the next week's only three, but we'll call it five days a week. Got a lot of work to do to recover these credits and to and to get the students to where we, where they need to be. And I'm sure we have outstanding teachers who are ready to meet that challenge and ready to get started. So I appreciate all the all the work for our teachers and all the work administrations done in preparing for the school year. Thank you much. That brings us to 10.01, Board Members' Comments. Ms. Ollman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to speak to to our speakers tonight. There are three of us that currently have students in our schools. I don't think any of us are so far removed that we don't understand the difficulty of wearing masks. None of us want to wear masks, but all of us are following, I think, sound, scientific advice and guidance. And I think each and every one of us are here because we want to do what's right by the schools and by our students, and and we don't take any decision lightly. So I'm somewhat offended when when folks come here and kind of yell and scream and applaud and clap, and appropriately so, when all of us have had many sleepless nights about our own students as well as the other 11,000 students. Then, just kind of turning and pivoting, because we're going to pivot a lot, pivoting to a more positive note, want to do some shout-outs to Lafayette Band students who will welcome our 175 new teachers. New teacher orientation tomorrow at 7:00 in the morning at Lafayette High School. And then, I do troll social media, and I don't usually, I never respond to our our local school conversations. However, there was a long thread recently about early college and the fact that we don't have it and students can't, high school students can't earn credits. And so, that's just not true. And so, I'd encourage people who have high school students to talk to your guidance counselors and to learn about the early college program that we have had in place now for almost five years. And so, students can actively leave with many credits. My daughter saved me one year of college tuition and is now beginning her senior year and left Lafayette with 25 credits. So we do have a partnership with Thomas Nelson. Folks said that we don't, we do. So I just encourage people to definitely reach out to your guidance counselors to learn about what your high school students have access to because we do have partnerships in this community, and Thomas Nelson is certainly one of those. And then, just lastly, I said this a few minutes ago, I really, we are such a unique community. I was born and raised in Northern Virginia. I've been in Williamsburg for 30 years now, would never leave it. And we are very locally-minded, and it worries and bothers me that there's partisan politics that's being brought to our school board that has absolutely nothing to do with what we do in WJCC schools. And so, as a short time around this board, I caution, I caution the community, I caution our board to getting caught up into what I think is just hyperbolic. I want you to say the word that I want to say. It's just, it's not true, it's not accurate. People speak of what they know nothing about. And so, I caution people before you come to this board and lecture us, that you first understand what it is that we're, what what kind of services are we are providing to our students and and not get caught up in partisan politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ollman. Ms. Young?
Well, I guess, first of all, I just want to thank our speakers for coming tonight. It takes a lot of courage, especially for people to come and and talk to the board. I understand what Ms. Ollman just said, but I'm, I'm not offended by people being passionate. So, on another note, I want to thank Dr. Dolan for coming. I thought her information was very informative. I do want her email address, please. I also want to congratulate our four summer school graduates. Attending the summer school graduation, I don't, it wasn't very long, but just seeing the, or sensing the feeling that that those two, there were only two people there, but the fact that the school division took the time to celebrate the accomplishments of those four students who finished and the two who we had the graduation ceremony for, it always brings me a lot of joy. It's like going to any of our other activities, our early college ceremony, and because I think sometimes we don't, we forget that some of our kids don't finish on time. They need that another couple of months. I do appreciate Dr. Worley's statement about we need to be engaged and on track. It's my hope that that within the first nine weeks, we'll have a good, accurate idea of where our students are and what needs to be done. And I have every confidence in our teachers to make sure that that these students, students will move forward and that whatever learning loss has happened will be taken care of rather quickly. And I do want to welcome our new teachers that are coming on board, our 50 new teachers, 125 or 120 that are coming from other school divisions. And I want to welcome all of our teachers who are returning back for in-person learning this year. To me, that's a real step forward and a point for celebration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I have just a couple of things to say. First of all, I very much appreciate the presentations tonight concerning what we're doing instructionally at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school. And not only tonight, but I think the last couple of meetings, it's been very clear to me that we had, that there's definitely a plan, that you're, you're on top of it, and you know the kinds of support and resources that our teachers need. And so, I don't have a lot of questions about that because I've really, it just made sense to me. I think the other, I would also like to thank, I don't think she's here yet anymore, Dr. Dolan, who is assisted by Dr. Powell and Dr. Worley, her presentation. The only regret I have is that many of the people who spoke up about wearing masks or not wearing masks, it's unfortunate that they didn't stay long enough to hear some of that information. Maybe they'll pick it up if they go and watch a video of this particular meeting, but I thought it was very informative and 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 very helpful. The only other thing I would say is, frankly, I was disappointed in the behavior of many of our citizens who came in tonight, obviously angry, were definitely wanted to raise their voices, a lot of clapping and cheering, totally, total disregard for our chair. We have rules. We have rules that we have adopted that allow for structured, organized ways for citizens to make comments, to ask questions. And it's, I just, I found it really unfortunate that so many chose to totally disregard the decorum and the approach that we try to use up here as members of the school board. It's, it's not helpful to berate or criticize in, in using the kind of language that was used, school board members. I know all of us up here and down there, sorry, work very hard as members of this school board. We're faced with a lot of difficult decisions, some of which we agree on, some of which we don't. But, but we don't go about operating, trying to see who shouts the loudest, as if shouting the loudest is somehow going to determine what we end up doing. We don't do that. We don't behave like that. So I hope that they, that folks that come in have a perfect right to ask us questions, to criticize, to say whatever you want to say about school board members. But you have to realize that we're not getting paid a bundle to be up here. Many of us have actually, most of you don't have to do it, but the rest of us go out and beat the bricks when it's time for an election. We've talked to, we talked to people in our, who are constituents. And it just, you know, it's one of those things that makes people decide, you know, I don't want to do that. I don't want to, why do I want to get berated or humiliated in public like that? So I'm not gonna, you know, it's, and it's unfortunate because there are a lot of really good people who could also be school board members but choose not to, you know, get into that arena. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. It's just, you know, I've used words like respect and responsibility and patience in the past. And and as, as Dr. Dolan, she didn't use these words, but it is true. This virus is a moving target. It continues to evolve. So yes, we do, we constantly change how we're going to deal with it because the virus changes or the way we respond to it changes. And I know that upsets a lot of people, but that's the way it is. It's, you know, next week, we may have to do something different because something gets discovered or we get a, you know, another variant of the virus that we're not ready for, we don't know enough about. So, and I know the rest of you, I'm probably teaching to the choir because you're still here, but I, I just felt it was, it was important to say something about that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. I think Dr. Beers covered a lot of it. I would like the public, when they do come in to speak, to know what the rules are. And and I think some, one of the ladies said, oh, we can't hear you back here or whatever, but know what, when you come into any kind of governing body, know what the rules of engagement are and and respect the rules of engagement. And, you know, respect the people that are in the community with you. So I thought it was disrespectful tonight to the chair who had every right to have gavelled out the meeting and stopped public comment altogether and would have been totally supported by this board had he done so. But he chose to power through it to hear what people were saying despite the fact that people were disregarding his, his suggestions, despite the fact that they were clapping and doing all the things that our vice chair had instructed them not to do. So, yeah, it was disappointing. It was disappointing. I would like to commendate the other, the other speakers who who did comply and did understand the rules of engagement with this board. So I also would like to say that, you know, know the, you can, you can have a different opinion, but if the governor of the state has required that we do something and we're going to go ahead and do it, you're really barking up the wrong tree to a bunch of people that are just following the law of the land. So just know that. And then, also, to my knowledge, and I would love someone to correct me if I'm wrong, we don't teach critical race theory in K through 12 in WJCC. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I think there seems to be some, you know, someone asked the question tonight. She didn't know, so I thought, might as well just ask the superintendent to confirm it. So anyway, that's, that's, I would also like to thank all the speakers. Oh, yeah. The other thing I would like to say is, when Dr. Worley was talking about the mitigation and and all of the strategies, it just reminded me of how professional our our teachers are. They are professionals in teaching. They are licensed to teach. They are, they are, they have gone through certifications. They are, you know, it's not so easy to teach children, especially ones that have have experienced the last year. I have a neighbor who is a reading recovery specialist, and she was telling me what she does, the one-on-one tutoring, the, all of the things that these reading recovery specialists do, that none of us have any clue of the skill set required, that all of these people working in our division for the benefit of our children. And I just want to thank all of the unsung heroes, the ones that are plodding along despite all of the, the rigmarole from the public, one way or the other, they are just the professionals that they are, working with the children in front of them to do the best thing, the best work they can. So wanted to just thank them.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let everyone know that Dr. Beers and I participated in a session along with Dr. Heron, the, as part of the preschool task force study. And so, that, the results of the feedback and the research that the consultants are doing will be shared with us later in the fall. So that was a good focus group. So I wanted to report that I attended the NAACP's Back to School Forum, which was about how to advocate for your children, and found that quite interesting and helpful. I also want to thank everybody here who stayed the entire length of the meeting and wore a mask. I appreciate all of you in the gallery who are masked up, 100% of you are, and so, thank you for that. It means a lot. And I wanted to just echo my personal dismay about the public comment section of tonight's meeting. I, you know, my observation is that the people who came to speak with anger in their voices, they came, they spoke, they cheered, they jeered, and then they left, which suggests to me an interest in having a one-way exchange or a one-way conversation, I guess, rather than listening and learning. And I find that often just far too common today, and I, and I'm, it is really disappointing to me. And then, I just, in in response to tonight, I would just like to respectfully request that my colleagues on the board collectively work together to ensure that the rules of our meeting are followed. I believe that no one participates in a bad meeting without agreeing to that. You know, you participate in a bad meeting, then you take partial responsibility for that. And I think that the public comment section tonight was sort of beneath all of us, beneath our community, and and I, and I would appreciate it together if we could work to, in the future, make sure that our mask mandate is upheld. I think we need to hear, adhere to our own rules. This is also a school function, and schools mandate masks. So I think if we want that order to be respected in the schools, we need to insist that it's respected here. So I hope that we can all work together to make sure that that happens in the future because we have some agency over that. I also hope that we won't tolerate that kind of cheering and jeering in the, in the future. We have the ability to to call a recess. And I think not doing that reduces respect for this body and for the process of public comment. So I, I believe in public comment. It's not a requirement, but it's something that I want to continue. But if we allow it to degrade the way it did tonight, it's gonna, there's going to be like in other school boards around the state that have decided not to have it as part of their meetings because it's gotten so ugly. I don't want to ever support that, but I think we have a role to play there. So I hope that all of us will work together to do that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dahl?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Cook, I don't disagree with you, but, Mr. Chair, I want to say thank you to, for your steadfastness as a chairman this evening during public comment, not taking the bait. I, I do, in the pit of my spirit, believe that there are certain here tonight that were baiting you to appear as a chairman that did not care about what our public wanted to share. And so, thank you for not taking that bait and for honoring the voices of those that did come. Unfortunately, they, they came passionate, and that passion turned to disrespect. There's no other way to call it on, on behalf of so many that spoke this, this, this afternoon, this evening. And and that's not a way to air a grievance, to to bring a redress to to a government entity. entity that you disagree with, their process, their, their, their policies as a board, how they do business. And these things are not new, as Ms. Hummel mentioned. We've been doing this, I've been doing this for a year and a half, and my colleagues here for much longer than me, much longer than I have. And I cannot remember a time when this board did not show sincere honor and value to the voice of the public. Even tonight, we saw that. So thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that was difficult. I'm sorry? Okay. Okay. What I'm trying to get at is that in my short time here on the board, I've only seen the board show the utmost respect and civility to the community that deserves to be here, that I desired they be here and show, and show their concern for what's happening in, in this division, in this community. It's got to go both ways, though. As much as, as steadfast as you were this evening, I, I can't predict what would happen next meeting, you know, if, if, you know, circumstances were to prove the same. And so to our public that went home, hopefully watching again, I, I'd like you to hear that this is your space, this is, this is a place for you to, within the confines that the time limitations allowed, share what is burdening your heart, what we're doing right and what we can be doing better. But know the process, know the procedures, and do that for all of us so that we can operate in a fashion that is honoring to our community. Williamsburg, James City County, I, I speak at different venues and different organizations. And I tell them, we are not Loudoun County. We are not Chesterfield. You know, our community, they care about what's happening in our schools. And they come and they voice their opinion and they're respectful. They're dignified in the way they do that. And it was far from that today. And so I hope that this was just a blip on the, on the map and that in our next meeting, we can have public comment, we can show civility and respect for not only the chair but each other that doesn't necessarily agree with, as we sit amongst one another, doesn't necessarily agree with all the comments that are being shared. It was a grave disrespect to, to each other, the ones that we're rubbing shoulders with in this room. And that's all I want to share.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. We heard a lot tonight about, our several speakers talked about the foundations of our democracy. We in Williamsburg, James City County have been doing representative government for a long time, a lot longer than most, almost 400 years ago. In Jamestown, the House of Burgess was started, which has since morphed into the current House of Delegates. It was founded on civility, respect, and decorum. Respect for the rules, respect for conversation. Today in the Virginia Senate, when a senator stands up and says, my good friend from Charles City County said this, he is getting ready to shred that guy. But he says, my good friend. I shared a, this editorial, my school board colleagues yesterday from the Ruin Oak Times, which was, which was, the title of it was Bad Behavior at Public Meetings. One of the, one of the, it's a very well-written article that talks a lot about what we saw today. What we saw today was not as bad as, as it was in other school boards and other meet, public meetings that have happened recently in the Commonwealth and in the nation. But it wasn't good. And one of the paragraphs, it says, feel passionately about some matter of public policy is quite fine. However, feeling passionately about something is not the same as the behavior we're seeing at some of these school board meetings. I did make the decision to push through. I didn't think it would get better to clear the room. I didn't think it would get better to call a recess. I didn't think it would get better to throw everyone out of the room who was not wearing a mask. I might reflect on that over the next week or two and make a different decision at the next school board meeting, but that's what I felt tonight. I didn't feel that we would be furthering progress by taking those actions. Maybe it wasn't the right decision. I don't know. But I'll, I'll reflect upon that over the next couple of weeks and see what happens at our next school board meeting. But what we, what we saw tonight was not good for democracy. It was not good for representative government. Having a respect, this board has respect for the, for the members of the public who come and speak in front of it. And we also expect that respect coming back to us. And that includes following our rules and having a respect for the speakers at the podium. So I guess I'll just kind of leave it at that. But it was kind of a tough night. One thing that we really haven't talked about between now and our next meeting, school starts, you remember school, right? That's what we're all here for, August 30th. I guess I misspoke. The first two weeks are four-day weeks and not anything else. So looking forward to getting school buses on the road, getting kids in classrooms, and getting teachers teaching those kids. Because that is what it's all about. It's all about the kids and not about the adults. So upcoming events, we have a policy committee on September 8th, 21, 8:30 o'clock. It's virtual in room 300 in the annex. Another, another interesting upcoming event is, you know, the first day of school. That's another story. Upcoming meetings. Upcoming meetings. On September 7th, we have a closed session starting at 6 o'clock in room 300 in the annex, followed by a work session and action items at 6:30, also in room 300 in the annex. And on September 21st, we have a closed session starting at 6 o'clock here at the Stryker Center and a regular meeting at 6:30, also here in the Stryker Center. And without objection, we're adjourned.